For coming to our study session for water and sewer rates on March 16th. And if everyone could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
And then if anybody's new to our study sessions, one thing we do different here is we do the presentation first so we all know what we want to comment on. So that way, if you prepare to comment and it's and you see something that's different, you'll be able to change it based on what you see. So first, we'll start with our water and sewer rate presentation by Noah. Noah Maholski is our Director of Public Works. Once he's done, then we go into the public comment. Everybody can come up to the podium and tell us what you think. And then the board kind of takes in everything and has a discussion. So it's a little bit different than where there's public comment first than a presentation. Because Noah spent the last year coming up with some good ideas to find kind of peace in the land for everybody is what we're hoping. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. So I'm going to set the stage for the decision points that we have for this year's ratemaking. And we've narrowed it down to kind of three factors that we're looking at that I'll kind of explain to you. First, though, I wanted to go through and kind of let you know the schedule that we're looking at. Because it's a tight one. So the study session is tonight, obviously. And we're going to be looking for direction from the board for the key decision points that we've delineated for the rates for this year. That will allow our contractor, the Raph Tellis, to go back and actually produce the preliminary rates. So we need kind of the policy decisions from you guys tonight to go back and have our rate consultant look at the actual rate. Now, I have impacts of the decisions either way that you're going to be asked to kind of let us know your preference on. So I can tell you what that impact's going to be, but until we have these decisions made, we can't actually go and give you an actual rate. But I can tell you and frame it how each one of the decision points changes the rate, right? And that's due to because in April, we have to actually, I mean, the rates go into effect April 1st. But we have until April, the end of April, to actually do the billing and send out the bills. But that just indicates how tight of a timeline we're under. April 10th, we'll be introducing the actual rates at a board meeting. And then April 24th, we'll be going for final approval of the rates. And that's when the resolutions and all that are actually, you know, put in place. And the deadline of 4/24 is a hard deadline because we have to apply those rates by the end of the year and we don't have another board session to kind of go through before that time. So then talking about the objectives of the decisions that we have here in place. You know, in order to develop the rates, again, we need direction from you guys. So there's the couple kind of decision points out there. There's whether or whether or not to apply the fixed fee MEU charge to the secondary meter program participants. We've gotten a lot of feedback on that, clearly. We made the transition to MEU last year, if you recall, from a residential equivalent unit. That was done in a way to bring equity. Everybody was charged a flat fee before. That was the same for everyone, no matter how much water they used. And so this MEU structure shifted that paradigm and kind of put the burden of the cost of the system on those higher meter customers. And we'll go into that deeper. I'll remind you of the numbers we're talking about and how those charges line up and give you more information as we kind of go through.
And then just to put that in, that was just the first step towards monthly billing and getting where eventually those flat fees go away because it, or not go away, but are reduced because it'll be higher.
Right. This is an interim step of equity.
Getting us closer to what your real usage is.
Yep. And I'll go into that further as we kind of go down the line here. But yes, this was an interim step to provide equity within the water system. Again, before this time, every residential unit was charged the same amount, no matter how much water they used. So this was a first step into going to equity. And the end game here is to go to monthly billing in a tiered rate where you pay more depending on how much water you use. And that's typically like DTE consumers all have that tiered rate system. So puts the burden on the actual use rather than a meter size, right? Then we need direction on some emergency projects that were delineated as part of our SAW grant. And then additionally, in order to get to that tiered rate, we need to replace our meter infrastructure. We want to do that in an accelerated way so that we can get to a tiered rate and monthly billing faster. So we're proposing a $3 million spend over three years. And we'll show you what the funding sources look like for that. So first decision point is an application of that MEU fee to our secondary meter program participants. So at the board meeting in 2022, when we were deciding rates, it was presented by our rate consultant that we weren't charging the fixed fees to our secondary meter program. And this was abnormal in the world of water rate setting. And additionally, represented a burden that the other rate payers are paying to support the secondary meter program. So there's some inequity to that, right? The rest of the rate payers are paying to upkeep the infrastructure on those secondary meter programs. And, you know, it, at that time, you guys kind of said through negotiation and through the talk up here in the resolution, you said, we're going to implement the MEU structure this year. And then let's look to implement that secondary meter charge in subsequent years, right? And then we undertook a public education program for those secondary meter program participants to let them know this was coming, get input, and then go forward with this or make a decision this year on it, right?
Sorry, public comment will be after the end because then you can comment on everything you've heard. Please, 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 please. Please, he's going to get it all over there.
It's a meter equivalency unit.
Okay.
It's a meter equivalency unit. And that's a structure, as you can see, meter equivalency unit, comma, or parentheses, MEU. So yes, that should have been in the first slide, right? And that what that is, is a standard from the American Waterworks Association that quantifies the demand on the system by each size of meter. So you can see right up there, the standard in place on there. And again, a three-quarter inch meter, demand on the system of 30 gallons per minute versus a two-inch meter and 160 gallons a minute. And then that ratio is the MEU. And then the amount paid on the bill is based, your proportion of your fixed fee is based on your meter or your perceived demand on the system, okay? So another thing that the fixed fee did was kind of consolidate our depression or our depreciation, our capital improvement project, and our O&amp;M factor all into one fixed fee. And additionally, this, it says it right there, this was our way to go to some sort of equity and some sort of basis to proportionize the impact or the costs on the system. And if you recall, we also lowered the amount of our O&amp;M that we covered as part of the fixed fee. So there's actually less cost within that fixed fee than there was in the past. And so that shifted that cost to the variable rate. So. O&amp;M is operations and maintenance. And again, a first step towards equity. So a little bit about the program. There's 32.
Going forward, if you use any acronyms that haven't been mentioned, can you explain it before?
Yep.
Just so we can.
10-4 means okay.
Thank you.
So the program is approximately 3,200 customers. The total customers in the system is about 15,000 customers, right? So that gives you a size and scale of this. Currently, the secondary meters are only charged that variable rate, right? So that's what we're talking about. Should a fixed fee be included for secondary meters, right? And so again, this is like industry practice. It's own staff research, our consultant, all have found that it's abnormal not to charge these charges to the program, right? Customers with secondary meters represent a seasonal, a peak user, right? So that impacts everyone's water rates. Our rates are based on how much the maximum we can take in a day and also the maximum we take in an hour on that day. So we are charged predominantly because of irrigation use, more based on our peak use and peak hour within a day. So that's a burden on the rest of the system from irrigation use. And we incur additional costs because we've got to maintain that the program participant buys the meter just like you do in a house when you build it. But then we maintain that meter going forward. So that represents a cost to the system to maintain those meters, replace them. And if you're not paying into the fixed fee, the rest of the customers are paying for that, right? And the vast majority of the customers, 85% of the people on the program, even with this fee instituted, it still makes sense for them. And so again, the impact to the system by this secondary meter program, it forces, A, it forces the care of these meters onto the rest of the rate payers. Additionally, it causes our variable rate to go up from our supplier because irrigation represents a major component of our usage. We're not like a highly dense community with small lawns and little irrigation. Irrigation really drives the demand of our system. So then I wanted to go over the breakdown within secondary meter program participants of the meter sizes. And really, this is indicative of the demand on the system. Our normal meter size for our residential use is three-quarters or smaller, whereas predominantly in irrigation, it's an inch or bigger, or an inch, right? So that represents an increased demand on the system, okay? So here's the kind of decision points, right? You can apply no fee, right? Status quo to what we're doing now. You can apply a fee for existing properties in the program or no fee for existing properties in the program, right? Then you apply the fee to people who are new to the program or people who sell their homes. And then you have a transfer of ownership, right?
So kind of like taxes where we, the next person wouldn't benefit from when we purchased ours.
Right, right. Sorry. Or you put the fee in for all existing and new customers, right? And so if you don't institute any fee, that's no impact on rates, right? It's status quo for right now. If you institute the fee on new program participants and transferred property owners, again, we add about 100 people a year into this program, right? So in order to really have an impact on the fee, we're going to have to have this in place for 10, 15 years before you actually get to a point, right? If we're adding 100 a year, we currently have 3,000. You're not really going to impact the fee until you build up enough customers in that class that are paying the fee to impact everybody else's rates down, right? So that's a hazard of that. If you implement the fee for everyone, right? Just I'm going to put it in place. This is our current MEU fees for this fiscal year. That'd result in about a $5 reduction in the quarterly fixed fee for all the other rate payers if we charge the secondary meter program participants the fixed fee. So maximum impact of bringing the rates down for the other 13,000 customers would be about $5 a quarter to this MEU fee, okay? Then you can see just what those fees are for this year, right? So the predominantly one-inch meters, it's 46 bucks a quarter. So we'll kind of gather your feedback on that at the end. I know there's some consensus around option number two, which is, you know, to use a kind of common term, it's a grandfathering, you know? And it recognizes that bond that I think the public feels that they had with the township when they entered the program, right? And it doesn't break that bond, right? So I think that's attractive. The no fee, obviously, that doesn't impact rates and that doesn't impact those secondary meter people. And then again, if you institute that fee, then it brings everybody, obviously, the secondary meter people have to pay that fixed fee on that. But everybody else's fixed fee comes down by about $5, so. So then the next two points that we got to look at are funding sources for both emergency projects and also the meter replacement program, okay? So we'll talk through that. And first, I want to look at my reserves. So we got in unrestricted reserves. Well, our goal, let's start at our goals, right? We have a goal of $13 million in unrestricted cash. 6 million of that is for emergencies and capital improvement that we have to undertake. 7 million of that is to cover 25% of the yearly O&amp;M, which we're billed by our commodity suppliers on a monthly basis. And we don't bill our customers until a quarterly basis. So that creates a difference between the revenues coming in and the expenditures. So this $7 million represents the smoothing out those hills and valleys. And it's money we need to keep in there to pay the bills before we get the revenue in two months later, right? So we can't touch that 7 million. And the 6 million is the goal that we all decided was where we want to be as far as if we get a sinkhole or some emergency that comes up, right? And emergencies have come up. But within that, we are currently over our goal by $7 million in that cash reserve account, right? So and that's evaluated yearly as part of the rate sending process. A lot comes into why there's $7 million in surplus there. One of the things is COVID. We can blame COVID for everything, right? But COVID has impacted the capacity of our engineers to do water projects. It's impacted the availability of the products that we use on the water system. It has impacted the ability for people to get work done. And that has all resulted in less money going out for capital in the last few years. So that's why we have that reserve there, right? And prudently, I'm going to recommend that we draw down those reserves to the goal that we set and utilize that money to take care of these issues that we have this year. So what are we talking about? I think we're all familiar with Long Lake Road, right? The issues out there. We have several other issues that have been delineated as part of the SAW grant and as part of the rains that occurred in 2021. So those rains, along with us looking more, resulted in exposure of several emergency sewer issues. Club Drive, it's a sewer that was placed on pilings in a wetland. It has collapsed partially and pilings need to be replaced. And the pipe is in imminent failure mode, basically. The top of the crown of the pipe has crushed and it's starting to fall in. Very similar to what happened on Long Lake Road. Bradfordton, same thing. Forest Lake, it's right next to the lake. We had a failure in a pipe adjacent to that when I started here in 2007. And it's, I mean, right through the side of the lake, right? So it's bad soils. It's another case where we've got pilings failing and the pipe is starting to collapse and fail, right? If that fails, we have liability for all the sewer backups and sewage exiting into the lake in that case that maybe kind of come about because of that. Additionally, our PRV, like I indicated, our ability to get projects done has been impacted by many inflation, COVID, all these things, right? And so a project that was supposed to take place in 2022, we didn't even get the material until shortly ago. So we're going to do that project that was basically supposed to get done last year. Important to note that this is $3 million in addition, like we have a pot of money that's for our normal capital improvement project that we have with the state and we have a 20-year plan out there. This is emergency projects. So these are above and beyond the normal capital improvement that we're doing on a yearly basis, right? So this is additional funding to that. So we look at where can you get the money for this, right? And I've already kind of let the cat out of the bag that I believe we should do reserves because that's money that we currently have, right? But I wanted to give all the options, right? So we could just put this $7 million right on the rate. I don't think anyone wants to see that. That would result in about $15 increase to the fixed fee and about a $2 to $3 increase on the commodity side. So unattenable increases as far as the customer base. I, as a director and a, you know, an industry expert in this case, feel like a rate increase of that amount is unattenable, right? And not the way to go. So then we have our reserves, which again, this is money in the bank that we have around for these items. So I believe we should spend it before we take a loan out. But the other option is to bond these items, which is basically spreading the cost over 20 years and financing the projects, right? So $4.4 million of that seven, and we kind of rounded it up to five, or, I mean, these projects are all going to go over budget likely if history is, recent history is any indicator. But that's $4.4 million of that reserve money that we're talking about, right? So then there's another side of that, which is the meter replacement program. And we heard you loud and clear that we want to get to a point where the customer can be more in control, right? And how you do that is, and how you conserve water really is to put them into a tiered rate perspective where you pay more depending on how much water you use, right? And the only way we can prudently do that without creating liability for the system by underfunding it, if we set the tiered rates in the wrong spot year to year or at any time, we may undercollect for the system and the system cannot go out of business, right? So that's a problem. Plus, we won the lawsuit at the Supreme Court, but we would open ourselves up to litigation about the equity of that rate, right? So we may be sued if we don't set that rate in the proper spot.
And also to point out, that 1.2 million it costs to prove that we weren't doing anything wrong went into rates.
Right.
So we can avoid future.
It is in our.
We won't have to.
Clearly, it's in our favor to avoid liability in whatever way.
We as residents pay these lawsuits.
Yep. And I was deposed. I was up there. I saw how it went, right? And I understand the process and I don't want to be there again. So that's a major driving factor for me. And our consultants want to be sure before they put their stamp on it that we've got the data that allows us to put those tiered rates in the right spot. Because it could be detrimental to the system. Because if you undercollect and we spend the reserves down, you can't go out of business. We're the only game in town. So. So important to understand, this is a three-year project. Nobody on the planet can go out and do $9 million worth of work even in a normal year right now, this type of work. It involves getting into 16,000 homes, not a small feat. That's where I'm going to have to use my leverage through law and threaten to shut people's water off to get into the houses, right? But getting 16,000 people to comply is a very monumental task. And 16,000, just industry, you can't get it done in one year. So we asked the contractor, how fast, how much can we push the pedal down on you, right? They came back and said, we can do a three-year program. So that equates to the 3 million a year. So the kind of thing is here, we're looking at how to fund year one of the three-year program, right? So and I can take that out of reserves now, but year two and three, we're going to have to reevaluate that because we may not generate the reserves to cover it. We may, and maybe another dry year like it was this year. It may not. It may be like '21 and we undercollect, right? That's part of the hazards of setting these rates because it's highly dependent on weather, you know? So but we are going to have to figure out how to fund that program going forward. It's not a silver bullet, right? But we're funding it out of reserves. It's a prudent way to do it. And my recommendation is we fund it out of reserves. It's a prudent way to do it because we get that first year out, then in year two, three, we'll look at our reserve balance. Do we have enough to pull out of there? Was it a good year? Was it a bad year? You know, did we do a good job setting the rates? Then if we need to bond it at that time, that would probably be my recommendations, years two or three. And then spread that cost over that 20-year period, thereby mitigating the impact to the rate, right? It's not going to be a big jump in the rate, two and three, and then down again. It'll spread it out. And that's prudent for future years because we don't have money in the bank ostensibly. And the meters have a 20, the lifespan of the meter will outlive the bonding likely. So that's a main tenet of bonding. You know, you don't want to bond something for 20 years that's only going to last five. That'd be like, you know, taking a loan on a car for seven years when you know it's only going to last five or something like that, you know? You're going to be paying that far after the livelihood of that car is gone. So for year one, we could just plop that 3 million on the rates, very much like the 4.4 million. It's an impact of like $13 on the MEU charge. And then it would be somewhere around $1 to $2 on the variable rate. Again, that's a stinker in my mind to plop it on the rates. Not prudent. If we had to do it, we need to meter in our ordinance. I'm required to meter the water. So, you know, if we had to do it that way, we would, but we don't. So and in the past years, we've done it in-house and we have, it's been a much longer process, 15-year-long process, but we have funded that out of O&amp;M or out of the rates, operations and maintenance or rates. So again, bond sales, I don't think we borrow money when we have money right now, right? So that's why I moved to reserves. But in subsequent years, we might have to go to bonding for it. But my recommendation for this year would be to pull that out of reserves because we have that 7 million in there, right? So weighing that out, we recommend that you use that $7 million in surplus cash in the reserves and unrestricted surplus cash in the reserves to fund the emergency repairs. That's just what that money is there for, right? Emergencies and capital improvement, which is your meter program. So fund that first year of the meter program out of those reserves as well. Allow these projects to be completed without impacting our end of the rates, which is important because we get, 60% of our costs are from our suppliers. And I'll show you what they're doing because rates are never going to go down because our, we buy it from another entity and their prices are always going up. So that's just a nature of the game here where you have Detroit. The infrastructure was built in Detroit and serves us here. We don't have the ability to build a water treatment plant and that wouldn't be cost effective, so we have to get it from Detroit. So this allows that without an impact from our end to the rates, doesn't take the reserves down below what we all said was our goal for them. And then it meets the intended purpose, like I said, of the reserves. So then a reminder, oh, a reminder is, here's our decision points that we have in front of you. It's whether or not to apply the fixed fee to the secondary meters. Now, this, again, this becomes really, the financial impact to the system is very small in relation to all the other charges. So this really becomes like a policy decision going forward and an equity type decision and whether, you know, you believe when people entered into that program, there was a bond made with the township, right? I can, that's something we heard a lot about. That's something we can sympathize with. I think there's some consensus around that option on the board, but I'll be asking for your feedback for that. Additionally, I want to know your feedback tonight on direction between, basically, we're throwing out the option of putting it on the rates. But do you feel comfortable me using that reserve money as it's intended to fund these programs? Or do we want to bond these programs and basically borrow on them? This, just get, like I was saying, you know, even if we keep our costs flat, DPW, capital improvement project through the engineering department, that represents 40% of the rates. 60% of our costs are from our suppliers. So we're expecting a 4.3% increase on the water side from Saquon. This was estimated in a letter until their board finally approved it, but it's final. WRC, which is our sewer commodity supplier, we're looking at 5.8% to 7.8%. I think we just projected it at 6. So and their board, I don't believe, has met yet. Then I just wanted to point out a quirk that our fiscal year does not line up with our commodity suppliers' fiscal years. So we, we have some offset. And when rates are enacted, when the, it's kind of creates trouble when you're setting the rates because it's early for them. They set them in July, so I'm trying to get numbers out of them in January, you know? And it creates just a little bit of overlap there, just something I wanted to point out. So back to the decisions at hand, you know, after you. So back to the decisions at hand, you know, after you enjoy public comment, I'll be looking for some indicators from you to give me what I need to go back to the rate consultant and have them kind of produce the rates. Our rate consultant, Raff Tellis, is listening in and on Zoom for this call, and then if I need them to jump in in the end, if you, you know, kind of go beyond my expertise, I'll bring him in, Colin Drat, from Raff Tellis, to kind of assist me in that. But I wanted them to be part of the meeting too, because really, this all kind of comes out of that process. So, obviously, I'll take questions. There's a slide says, you know, questions, but, and I'll, public comment will go through, but I'll kind of leave it up on this board, so you can kind of see these decision points that are at hand, so.
Do you guys want to hold our questions till after we hear from the public? All right, so, there we go.
Okay, so next up on our agenda is public comment, and the board is interested in hearing from any individual that wants to address the board. What we do is that we will, anybody who wants to speak will come to the podium here. Oftentimes, you can be in a line. We ask that you state your name and your address, and the limit is three minutes per person, please. And we look forward to hearing what you have to say. In particular, maybe comment on some of the items on the slide. It'd be very helpful, too. But go right ahead.
Sharon Foster, 6679 Vashon Court. I don't expect a response to these. I would just like to hear them addressed.
Can you pull that mic closer to your mouth?
It's usually not something that I'm told.
There you go.
I think I had one question answered as to why the need to change the meters, and I think a corollary to that is how often these meters are serviced. I don't see a lot of activity going on in that regard. I would like to understand who this consultant is and their background and understanding their expertise. I also would like to know if we would receive a copy of the presentation, or that will be posted someplace. There was a lot of material in there, and I saw people taking pictures and so forth. I am curious, although I think it was answered, about why the need to move to rush to this monthly cost. But I get it that you're carrying it. Been carrying it for a while. I don't know if anybody else has gone monthly anywhere else. I would like some background to some of the assertions made in the presentation as to how many municipalities standardly charge these additional fees. I think that would be relevant to know. What is demand on system? When talking about the additional demand due to having these second meters, I don't understand how that's demand on the system. It's water flowing through the pipe, unless that means usage of water, which we're paying for per whatever the usage is. There was some curiosity as to the peak or higher costs, like a tiered, if you're trying to conserve water, but then you need to remember that you're going to lower your amount of money being received for the water. I'd also like to understand what goes into the ready-to-serve or the fixed fee, if not some of these expenses. And I, most importantly, would like to understand if anyone took into account charging individuals who have impermeable, particularly the commercial areas. Much of this need for these improvements have come from the runoff and the need to filter runoff water and sewage water and to separate those systems. And Birmingham, for just one area in the area, which I will leave for you, did a nice study about charging for impermeable areas. I have over an acre that takes up a great deal of rainwater and other sewage. And just to close this out, I'm against this, and I'm angry about it.
Thank you.
William Vetter at 1529 Groton Road. And I'm just going to read what I sent to this township here. It was October 15, 2022. I received a letter from Bloomfield Township Director of Public Works, Noah Maholsky, basically saying that Bloomfield Township is considering charging a quarterly fixed fee for secondary water meters. I believe that this fee would be a betrayal to what I was told in August 2003, 20 years ago, when I installed our secondary water meter at a cost to us of $975. I was told that if I installed the secondary water meter, there would be no sewer charges for water usage recorded by that meter, and there would be no fee for the secondary water meter. Therefore, if the township starts charging a fee for the secondary water meter, I believe our case ought to be grandfathered without a fee, or the township could have a plumber remove the meter and give us $975. And I guess, in looking at my, I have my invoice back there in August, and I paid, let's see, for the installation, it was $355, $300 for the water meter, $70 the township got for the permit, and I put an additional bib on the thing so that I could water the lawn. Okay, so anyhow, I mean, if we're starting to charge a fee, I since then decided not to water my lawn. So basically, if they're going to charge me $46 a quarter for this fee, or for the fee, I mean, and a couple hundred dollars a year, I guess I want to take the thing out, and I guess I'd like to have the $300 bucks back for the water meter. But I would like to have the $975. Okay?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Joan Vetter, and I've been a long, I'm a longtime resident of Bloomfield Township, living at 1529 Groton Road since July 25, 1975. One of the things that I love about Bloomfield Township is that I just loved, if there was any business that I had to take care of, I could come in, whatever department it was, and people would listen to me, listen to me, and speak as though they're trying to accommodate what I'm saying. And one of the points that was made in the presentation was the bonding that the residents have with Bloomfield Township. And I want you to know that it's happened many times, when people say, you lived in your house for 47 years and eight months. You never wanted to move. I said, you know what? There's no place better. And then, when my neighbor across the street said she was talking to some friends, and they said, well, do you really like living in Bloomfield Township? And she said she told them there's no place better. I thought that was interesting, because that's exactly what I shared with her, so it kind of came full circle. So my appeal is for you to reconsider and grandfather us in with all the information that my husband gave you. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Wes Dietrich. I live at 1840 Argosy Court. I've been a Bloomfield Township resident for 37 years. And I'm in agreement with a lot of the comments that were made previously by other residents. And I just want to make one comment. It was in the presentation, it was implied or stated that people with secondary meters use more water than people without secondary meters. I think that's a faulty premise, faulty logic. I personally don't use one ounce different, different amount of water from before or after I had a secondary meter installed 10 years ago. You got, you got one pipe coming into the house. The water that's used, whether it goes through one meter or two meters, is the same water. So I don't, I don't see where the logic is or where the proof, if you could provide proof, that people with secondary meters use more water. Also, yes, I'm not sure, too, about the, the rush to go with these monthly meters. There's nothing wrong with the meters that are in place now, so I'm not really convinced why you have, why there's a rush to replace all the meters, incur that all, millions of dollars of cost. I think that's most, most of my comment. I was agreeing with everybody else what they said also. And also, I think, I agree that if there is something implemented, it should be grandfathered for the people. I also probably spent close to $1,000 10 years ago to install the second meter, between plumber's fees, permits, the cost of the meter itself. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's fair to impose that, because there was a, like, like people said before, a bond or an implied contract with the township regarding that secondary meter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Craig Fitzgerald, and I live at 1296 Lennox. I spoke at the prior prayer meeting and did a fairly overly complicated financial analysis based upon the financial, the five-year financial data that, that the township has. And I think Noah's presentation, if I understood it today properly, I think has come a long way to dealing with the concerns that I would have had. So I'm not, so I've got all sorts of notes here, which I don't think I'm going to get into. I'm going to try to make some general comments. The township's water and sewer operation is fantastically profitable, just period. Go look at the operating margins, compare it to publicly traded companies, compare it to water and sewer utilities. It's fantastically profitable. So that may speak to potentially higher rates, could. It could also speak to a really well-run, efficiently-run operation. I don't know which it is. But we're sort of used to what we're used to. So you are generating really strong cash flow. Your balance sheet is incredibly strong. You're $7 million over the minimum recommended reserve levels, so you've got a lot of room. $13 million recommended, $7 million over that, you're $20 million. So I think Noah's sort of notion of funding initially, the first year of these improvements out of the reserve is absolutely right, because there's plenty of money there. I think it's unlikely you're going to get year after year of really huge projects, so I think so this year's experience is probably not going to be recurring, probably, could. And in that case, you look at the reserve condition and you make decisions on whether you go for bonding or not. And I think more than likely, you may not have to in as significant a way if the profitability stays there. So my impression is you have really come quite a long way in listening to at least the concerns I heard in the last meeting that I attended, which was the first meeting I attended. And I feel pretty comfortable with the characterization that if you folks are generally feeling towards that approach that I heard him talk about, I'm totally in support of that. So I feel great about the progress that I perceive you folks have made. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Garrett Hartunk, 1764 Palmetto Court, resident for 37 years. I can't recall all the alphabet soup that was presented to me about the various rates. From what I understand, we will receive a fixed rate based upon the diameter of the water line command. Is that correct?
So we're taking everybody's questions all at once, just so you know, we're, we're writing them down, and we're going to have Noah answer everybody at the end.
Where's our specialist?
Sir, sir, we're taking everybody's questions all at once, and then Noah will come back up and answer them.
Okay.
We're feverishly writing, I promise.
Well, okay. That was my impression, okay. Based upon that, when I installed my meter about 10 years ago, and I don't have the costs down to the penny like was presented by the other guy, but it was around 700, 800 bucks. I had whatever size came in that was split into two meters. Now, if it's a fixed fee, and I have to pay for the secondary meter, I'm just going to go and hook my sprinklers up to the other line again, which is one fee, and.
You're going to pay someone.
And who's the owner?
Who's telling you the winner?
Nobody. Nobody. You're making me rip out a meter at my expense. Now, if you want to rip out the meter at your expense, feel free. But if you charge for the secondary meter additionally, I will hook up my sprinkler system to the main feed line and pay that fixed fee, period. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Dave Gardner. I live at 1484 Ashover Drive in Whisperwood, which is in the corner of Adams and South. I put in a great number of these meters myself. Basically, what I discovered when I first started doing them, because I was a plumber, I start, first started doing them, is I found out you don't need an inch meter to make your lawn sprinkler run. The other thing I want to bring out about that is that the amount of water you put on your grass depends on the number of heads you have running in each section. If you only have two, you're not going to be putting as much water on your grass as you would if you had four. So therefore, the running that meter is nowhere near what it would cost to run. And the reason that meter was put in by a lot of the people in the subdivision I live in is because of the sewer rates. That was the deal. If you put the meter in, you didn't have to pay the sewer rate. Did not say anything about changing how much you paid for the water, which is what I saw on one of the slides here, that it has a different rate. I don't believe it does. I think that the water meter itself is, it is what it is. Whatever you use is what you pay for, and that's what it was agreed to. And now, all of a sudden, you're saying, we're going to have to pay you back to use a second meter that we put in under the understanding that we would not have to pay anything for it other than the water. Sewer rates are very high. They're higher than the water rate. So I can understand why people decided to put in the second meter. But I don't understand why, all of a sudden, with a $7 million surplus, now you're deciding, well, I'm going to charge them for the second meters, because it's only fair to the ones who don't have them. The ones who don't have them, that's their prerogative. They have the right, the welfare and everything to put them in if they're willing to. I know it's expensive. I know what I charge to put them in, and I know what they can do. And I put everyone in according to code, and they're all inspected by your inspectors, so I know that they were done right. And they're all still working. The other question I have is, why are we replacing all of the meters in every house? What the hell are we going to have for? I've lived in.
How about the contractors?
I've lived in four different houses and have never replaced a water meter in any of them, ever. And I don't know how to do it. So this bellowing about if you have the second water meter and something goes bad, we can come in and replace it free, is hogwash, because you're never going to do it. He always said himself, the meter will probably outlast whatever it is they're trying to collect. So why are we talking about things that don't concern us to start with? And why are we taking the brunt of the costs of anything that you decide you want to do? Or the DPW. And the other question I do have, doesn't betray you, because I know you, I know because this is a township, the streets and so forth are not your responsibility. If I would have known that before I moved in here, I would have never moved here. I never knew that a township did not have any legal right to the streets. And we did a survey last year. We had a board that did a survey. Okay, well.
Thank you.
They told us that if we wanted to have our, our streets replaced, it was going to cost $40,000 per home to do it. it was going to cost $40,000 per home to do it. Now, how many people do you think in here who are giving up in age like I am can afford that kind of money? How many people do you think in here have increased their costs to keep their house running because they can't do it anymore? So they got to pay people.
I'm sorry, but I do have your frustration with you with how the county charges us, definitely. We share your frustration on having to pay the county to fix our roads too.
Hi there, my name is Hugh Anderson. I live at 1756 Brookview Circle. The gentleman that gave the presentation, I give him credit for having the guts to stand up here and make a proposal that is insane. I don't know what he's trying to prove. According to my notes, he's here asking for opinions. And that's the purpose of this thing. Sir, I hope you got an opinion. Nobody wants you to do whatever it is you're attempting to do. And God only knows what it is you're attempting to do. My advice to you, sir, is go home and concentrate on what your job is, which is not replace this meeting.
Please keep any comments to the seven of us. Like you said, he was brave to come up here. You can yell at us.
I'm sorry. I apologize. He asked for comments. And he asked for us to express our opinion to help him. My opinion for you to help him is drop the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Thomas, Hickory Grove, Bloomfield Township. I originally instigated sewer water lawsuits. So anybody want to get mad at me, blame me. But it's because I went back and looked at the water fees from the public documents from the township from 2010 to 2017 at the time. And while there's no way to serve charge until 2011, that was a new one in 2011. But from the cost of the water, from Sacoa to us, went up 14% over that time period. The water rates in the township went up 563% in that same period of time. That's eye-opening. And I went out and got petitions. Got almost 300 other residents to sign petitions. In the dead of February, knocking on doors, getting enough people to sign these petitions to ask for a forensic audit of the sewer water department because looking at the public documents at the time, there's no way to tell what their real budget was or how the allegations were being accounted for. And that's still true today. In fact, there's less information out there about the sewer water operations today than there was back in 2017. So I really have a hard time with this. And being an engineer, P1 over V1 equals P2 over V2 is a very standard physics equation. That means the pressure in the system. The pressure in the system's already there. We don't have to adjust for the different lines. So the pressure in the system's already there. So we aren't adding anything to help the pressure of the system. The other thing is that the water goes through the mirrors, the water goes through the mirror, and that's what you're charged. Whether you have a 5-inch pipe or 1-inch pipe, if you only turn the faucet on one time, that's how much water you use. I mean, that's just common sense. And then there's also the fact that we did pay for the separate meter on our own. Our water rates are the highest in the area, bar none, which automatically should be, put some shame back. And the other thing I ran on when I ran for public office and I brought to the people here is an online checkbook, something that we used at Ford that I became very intimately involved with. You could tell what every project was budgeted, how much money was put there, where it was appropriated, how it was appropriated, who the vendors were that bid on that project, and what numbers were awarded. And then the follow-up, what were the actual costs at the end? There was a statement made, oh, projects overrun. Really? If all the projects are overrun, what are managers doing? What are our directors doing? And for the other projects that were deferred, those should have been carried over as line item budgets so whether or not we found out there was a real surplus or not. This isn't just a crisis in water prices for a lot of senior citizens and a lot of citizens in the township. And there is a crisis of management, is the way I'm looking at this right now, the township. And also, most of the homes that were built from 1990 on had a choice of a 1, 1 and 1/2 inch, or 10-inch water line. So every newer house is getting, I'm also precinct delegate, so I'm a public official.
That is legislative, but thank you so much. We appreciate your comments.
You guys needed to be able to come.
We definitely were. And we are so glad to win that lawsuit. Thank you so much. Please come on up.
Good evening. Nathan Loria, 3721 Thornbrier Way. That's my son Luca. I couldn't find a sitter for him tonight. So he's here with me, supporting me. Thank you. So just a couple of comments I wanted to make. We were here at a township open house. So we moved into the neighborhood around 2014, obviously. And we think it's a great place to live and we really love it here. So I don't want to have to move. But we were in a township event here for the kids and stuff. And there was like a tent and they gave us a card. And they're like, hey, if you add a secondary water meter, this thing basically pays for itself because you don't pay the sewage for the water that you use for irrigation. And over time, the expensive cost to install it would eventually, you know, it would pay for itself. And then after that, we'd be paying for what we use. And that's the idea is that the water that goes in your house goes through the sewer and you have to maintain that system for the amount you use. And the water that goes in your grass doesn't go to the sewer and you shouldn't really have to pay for sewer on that. And so we added the second meter and we paid a lot more than a lot of the other people here. So I kind of feel stupid, but I'll have to talk to them about their plumber. And we've had it for a few years and it's been fine. But the thing I don't really understand is like our secondary meter, as other people have mentioned, is split off after the 1-inch line that comes in the house. And I believe the gentleman who showed the presentation showed that there's a maximum flow that you can get through a 1-inch line. And so whether or not you split it into two lines or one line or 16 lines, you can only get so much water through the main line that comes in the house, which is 1 inch, right? So in my opinion, it doesn't really matter what size the second meter is after you split it because even if you have everything on all at the same time, you're still only getting that 1-inch line maximum through the main line through the house. So in terms of, you know, putting extra burden on the system, that's the part I don't really understand. And like if I water my lawn while I take a shower, the amount I can get through that single 1-inch line is still the same, right? So I don't feel that that puts any extra burden on the system that would justify the extra cost. And so I would recommend and I'd feel good if the board at least grandfathered the people in who were told with the cards and the stuff that we were handed out, you know, that we kept that promise between us that, you know, this thing could pay for itself over time. And for me, I think it just makes plain sense that, you know, the water you put on your lawn doesn't go through the sewer and doesn't put a burden on it. And so we shouldn't have to pay for that. And the water that goes down my toilet goes through the sewer and we need to keep that system working well. And so to me, the way my house is set up is an ideal setup. And I'm happy to pay for what I use and what I don't. I think, you know, it just makes sense not to do that. And so that's really the main comments. And the other thing I wanted to ask or say was, while I was looking at the tiered system, I know you guys would have to change the infrastructure of the meters to do all that stuff. There's extra cost to make it a three-year program because you got to get in everybody's houses and like change all the meters. And I'm not on board with any of that. But it might ease a little bit the stress if you incentivize somehow, like early adopters. So for instance, maybe giving a bill credit for people who change it within the first year and that could save you some money by having a shorter time period project. Or some of those other types of incentives, maybe you can do like a cash credit or a certain reduction in rates over time. Maybe incentivize, just an idea. I don't think it's a good idea to do tiered, but if you have to, I guess.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I am Abdul Razak. I am living in 2165 Lost Tree Way, just across from the International Academy in Bloomfield Hills. I've been living there with my family, raised two sons since 1981. And about 15 years ago, I installed this secondary meter with a cost of about $800-plus. Paying for the meter as well as the installation cost within township-approved plumber. Two years later, it broke down. I had to pay another $500-plus. And I only get marginal benefit because my lawn is not that big and I don't know if water is that much. So if you are asking me now to pay for the meter charge, fixed meter charge, I just ask you why? I paid for you. I bought it from you. You already made a profit from it. And there was implied contract that there was going to be no fixed charge and no sewage charge for this water. So I agree with all the gentlemen that it is unfair to now impose a meter charge, fixed meter charge, in addition to the rates. Now, my other question is, I'm an engineer, or I was. And they say that don't fix something that is not broken. Why are we replacing all the 16,000 meters? Our meters are working fine. It looks like it's looking for jobs that doesn't need to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Markin Tokley. I'm a precinct three delegate in Bloomfield Township. And I wanted to start with a comment an attorney made representing the township during a previous water and sewer budget session. The individual had stated, what's the cost basis of the change? Do we need to change these meters right now? No, we don't. I think a lot of people have made that clear. And it's about collecting revenue every month. If you're going to collect revenue every month, based on what you've said in previous meetings, you have said the amount of money you need in the account goes down significantly by several million dollars. Let's also take a look at the amount of money in reserves came from the March 31, 2020 audited financials, 20.4 million in excess reserves. That's where that number came from. Since then, the only information they've given us was the 123122 report. And it says $8.9 million, $8.9 million in additional revenue. Noah was up here telling us that there are no additional projects and compensation. But in that same report, it says total water revenues are at 85% of budget, three-quarters of the way through the year. That's a 10% additional amount. It also says that total expenditures are 61% of budget. Why don't they update the numbers in that financials? All seven of you ran on transparency. Where's the transparency? We don't have it. And when Olivia was up here stammering a few years ago about that number, the clerk said nothing and the treasurer said nothing. The clerk is responsible for the books. The treasurer is responsible for the funds. Lastly, if you want to sue the township over water and sewer, you sue the township, not water and sewer. And here's why. We pay them a fee consistently to manage the funds. It's called a central services fee. The OPEB liabilities, water and sewer was overpaying more than what was approved by the board. And that additional amount above the annual benefits is not included in the budget session. And was that money legally removed and transferred? And who did it? Over a million dollars and you go after the township and the township benefited. And the township has paid money to do that work. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Hi, my name's Joe Walsh. I'm on 2410 Heron Wood. And I think the citizens that have spoken have covered this. I learned a lot today. I congratulate Noah for standing up and explaining some things. But it didn't really answer the fundamental questions of why. And I think the citizens have brought that forward. I'm also always concerned when the issue of equity comes up. As your citizens have pointed out, people have the option to put in a secondary meter. They were encouraged to. I was. I've been here 22 years. I put the secondary meter in about 10 years ago. We knew the sewer fees were going to go up and they needed to go up. And a lot of people made what was an intelligent decision and paid that money. And you are the policymakers. What you do influences what people do. We put the meters in because of the explanation that sewer fees were going up. And I still am not clear on why this proposal makes sense. The thing that's been added in my mind tonight is why are we replacing the meters? I mean, my meters are the best-looking piece of equipment in my house. And they were just there to fix them because the telemetrics weren't working. And I might mention in terms of this monthly billing, come on, you can estimate the monthly billings. You can do it with, you know, a small calculator. If you want to bill monthly, do it. Don't change all the meters to do it to have precise numbers. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I am Tom George, 3590 Berkshire. And my son lives in Royal Oak. I asked him out of curiosity to see his water bill. And there were only three charges on his water bill. A water usage fee, a sewer usage fee, and a $15 quarterly admin fee. It was a very clean and simple bill. So my question is, are we overcomplicating this? Are we charging a meter fee just because a consultant tells us to? And are we going to a variable rate program and spending $3 million a year for three years, $9 million to replace all these meters? What is the purpose of that? I really don't understand why we would spend $9 million to replace all these meters and to go to a variable rate program. Let's keep it clean and simple.
Thanks for your comment.
My name is Gwen Fitzgerald. I live at 1296 Lennox. I am not a long-term resident. I've been in Bloomfield Township for four years, four and a half years. I would just like to say that I want to live in a community where the leadership through their actions appears to respect the fact that you're spending our money. I don't feel that here with this board and I didn't feel it with the prior board. And I think that's a sad thing. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for your comment.
Mary Alschardt, Bloomfield Township President. It is time for this board to revisit the poor decision to add an extra fee onto the water bills of 2,100 residents simply because they have a large pipe. This manufactured reason to add an extra $250 per year on some residents' bills is wrong. And it was not well thought out and no one in this board had the critical thinking skills to question the consulting firm that proposed it. The water rates we had before the lawsuit were high, but they were based on usage as all utility bills should be. The problem is that they were not formalized, which was the basis of the lawsuit. But instead of recognizing that usage should be the only barometer that should drive rates, this administration brings in a $30,000 consultant to come up with some creative ways of price gouging some residents. Raftellus recommendations were to charge households different rates based on the size of their pipe and if they had a secondary meter. This is not the way other utilities work and it is not the way Bloomfield Township water rates should be set. The rationale used is completely invented based on potential. Unfortunately, the potential for water usage is not based on pipe size. The real measure of potential for water usage is by the number of people in a household, the number that work at home, the water usage frequency for lawns, wash, pools, spas, whatever. To make matters worse, the rates for some households with smaller pipes was reduced at my expense. So now, 2,100 households with larger pipes are being unfairly price gouged for an additional $250 per year because there is a potential for more water use. My potential with two household members is lower than another household with smaller pipes but more family members. The thinking on pipe size is wrong and is penalizing some residents with higher fees while others are getting lower fees. This is fundamentally wrong. We have also determined that the amount that comes into the household is the same. Your claim that you had a meeting for residents on this was no way to connect when you made these rates last year. Clearly, you should have done an online survey. You should have been more forthcoming about this because now you're having to backtrack on what you had previously recommended because you didn't think through this. Okay? So stop price gouging residents on pipe sizes. This is irrelevant to potential water use. Rebate the 2,100 households that were unfairly charged this wrong fee and purge it from the rates going forward. Why are adding unfair fees onto the 16 million, well, 16 million, now it's $21 million budget surplus? How convenient that no one on this board has the egregious increase in their water rates because none of you have a 1.5-inch pipe. Stop this unfair pricing now.
Thanks for your comment.
Dick Ware, 1816 Bloomfield Circle. It's kind of hard to beat that. She's absolutely right. First of all, the slides that we saw tonight, I thought, were absolutely abysmal. Whenever you use terms like MEU, OEM, CIP, that nobody has any idea what they are, we're in the dark, okay? We're here as a study group, okay? That should have been clear. Those slides should be thrown out and redone so that the people here can understand that. It's just simple fact, okay? The other thing was, on the meters, you're charging us on the maximum usage of our meters. If you've got a three-quarter inch meter, you pay such and such amount. If you have a one-inch meter, you pay more. Why? It's not the meter size or the piping size. It's the water usage. Everybody agree to that?
Yeah.
It's the water usage, not the size of it. I have 100 amp service coming into my house. Are they going to start charging me now more money because I have 100 amp service coming in, even though I may be only using 12% of that? You shouldn't go on the services coming in. It's the services being used. If you've got a car that does 120 miles an hour, are you going to be paying more for that car because it can do 120 miles an hour? No. It's on the service, on the usages of that, okay? And I hope everybody understands that. People are upset about this. We paid the extra money for the second meter. I put a meter in somewhere 20 years ago, and apparently I got the wrong plumber because I paid about $1,400. I'm a new resident of Bloomfield Township. I've only been here 31 years. But this is a choice. We were told at that time, you put the second meter in, there won't be any charges for sewer. That's what everyone else was told. And now you're trying to reneg on a promise, okay? I think it's a horrible, you should just stop this in its tracks. That's my comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, stand before you again. Julie Herzog, 1433 Ashover Drive. I received this card in the mail. It said the topic of introducing a new fixed fee on future secondary meters. Surprise! I looked at the agenda. I did not see Noah's detail there, and all of a sudden, we're re-discussing this again. Problem. Noah additionally talked about tiered water rates, just like DTE. Well, I'm not sure where he is, but beginning in March, there is no more tiered rate standard. It's daytime rates. I think tiered is wrong. I think you people with Raftalus use them as a scapegoat, one, to go to MEU, and I totally agree with that, that standard across the board, across the country. The secondary rate, I am still back on that same issue again, folks. You have one pipe coming in from the main line. It's a one-inch, it's a three-quarter, it's a whatever. The fact that you would even contemplate charging a secondary meter, both for capital and debt service, is beyond me. That's double charging. I also don't believe that you should be charging for a secondary meter. As Noah said, there's only 3,200 secondary meters out of 15,000 customers. But what he didn't talk about was how many of those are commercial. Again, a little bit different. So 3,200 out of 15,000, 21%. Noah even made the comment, it's not going to bring in that much revenue. But then he turned and also said, oh, but they're, all the secondary meters are a draw, and so therefore, we have to even it out. Wrong.
Sounds like capitalism to me.
Wrong. Monthly billing? I'm not sure where you guys are going. I do know that across the board, when you go and look at all the different townships, they all are completely different. And they're completely different for many different reasons, some of which are GL, you know, Great Lakes Water Authority, where you can and can't do certain things. Additionally, monthly billing, you're going to find a lot of people in this township that send in their check on a quarterly basis. They don't want you accessing their checking account. The amount of maintenance and sending out bills for doing monthly is egregious. I'm not sure why you're doing it. I think you should just stay on a monthly basis for now. The second, replacing meters? Replacing meters? I don't get it either. So again, you're using Raftalus as your scapegoat. Not good.
Thanks for your comment.
Hi, Jerry France, 6856 Cathedral Drive. My wife and I and our girls moved here in 2017 from West Bloomfield, I mean, half of from West Bloomfield, oh yeah, from, oh yeah, from West Bloomfield, sorry, and then from Novi. But we moved here for the schooling. Thank goodness, because my daughter got a full ride scholarship, just graduated from here, and then we have a youngest in Connet. Point is, is the house that we moved into has a pool, never had a second water meter, and it was built in 1969. Our bill is super high, super high, super high, super high. First thing I did is, what can we do to accrue some of this cost, like get it down? I was informed, hey, get a second water meter. It will help out tremendously. So that's what we did. So to put a fee from being explained how I could save money would be kind of unfair to us to keep on having to pay for something. Yes, we may, our units, water in is water in. I may use higher units in a certain peak. I pay for that. But in lower peak, I don't use any irrigation because all we have is grass in the front yard because our whole backyard is cement. That's all I really have to say. I agree with Green grandfathered in and keeping it as how it is. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Michael Johnson, 1943 East Spinning Wheel. I'm going to have to apologize for some of my comments because I missed the presentation, so I got here late. So, but I did, when this first came up, I emailed you, Danny, and you replied quickly and said, here's what the consultant said. You gave me three points. And I was, I didn't bring my answer to you because I was expecting to hear the points, and I would be able to answer it off that. So I'm having to use my memory to, for what I think I wrote to you before. So one of the comments, I believe, was that the secondary water meter requires more capacity. So I'm a licensed professional engineer in Michigan, and I have a master's in mechanical engineering from MIT, and that is wrong. Okay? All people here, that common sense, were saying, yeah, it doesn't make a difference. You were all right, okay? And I heard, I heard there was some sort of comment in the presentation that said the size of the pipe coming in the house determines the flow. You try to put more flow through there, it won't take it. That's correct, okay? We don't do anything for how many branches are in the house. We don't go in a house and say, water is split for the dishwasher, split for five bathrooms and so on. That's, if you add a secondary water meter, that's the same thing. The flow was determined by the pipe coming into the house. So adding a secondary water heater to, water heater, a water meter does not require more capacity to support it. 100%, not at all. So there's no increased usage. There's disincentive, there's a huge disincentive for excess watering of the yards. That's the rest of the water bill. The water usage, the sewer charge for the, and the capacity charges for all that is more than enough to keep people from just going, oh, I've got a secondary water meter. I can use as much water as I want. I don't think anybody here thinks that. Okay? Another one was, the consultant said was best practice. Just because it's wrong, and, but other people are doing it, doesn't mean that we should do it. If it's wrong somewhere else, we shouldn't follow along. No excess capacity is needed for a secondary water meter. People talked about it being unfair to other people that don't have it. Well, just keep it the way it is, and let people keep on if they want to, put it in. No one's stopping them. If you want to talk about saying, you know, well, it's not fair for everybody else, guy talked about best practices in other places. In South Carolina, where I live, in Greenville, South Carolina, I moved up here, what they did was, across the board, was they looked at the water use, averaged the water usage in the winter and spring and fall, and then used any excess water above that in the summer was considered lawn watering, and they just didn't do the sewer charge for that. So then you could do that for everybody, and in that way, you don't have to worry about the benefit. And then just quickly, oh, I'm done. I got the major points out.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Hi, my name is Tina Previs, and I live at 6871 Cathedral Drive. And I have the original newsletter, Spring of 2004, with the township encouraging residents to put in a secondary meter. It's in this folder. I think in good faith, it'd be great if you grandfathered us in. Because we've been residents a long time. We pay our taxes. We pay our water bills. We love our township, but we want our township to love us too. And I do have one question that I need clarified, and I wasn't sure if I'd be able to get this answered. Noah said that we would be paying the secondary meter people approximately $250 a year extra, right? To save all the other residents $5?
Yeah.
Is that what I heard? Is that correct?
Mine would be $186.
So, you know, that just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Hi, my name is Joseph Greenbaum. I live at 4596 Walden Drive. Let me just read what I wrote down and make up a new story here. First of all, I do want to say I do not support the proposed additional charge for the secondary And I wanted to say that having been a Ford engineer for some 50 years, I have never seen a letter that went out with so little information about a very important event that's going to happen, right? And asking the residents to make a decision on that letter. There was nothing in that letter from which you could gain any information that was sent out by Mr. Micholski. Nothing. Other than, there was suggestion that we were going to pay extra on a secondary meter. I have been a resident of Bloomfield Township since 1986. When Bloomfield Township proposed the option of installing a secondary meter for watering grass, I took them up on it. I thought it was a good and smart decision. I had to get a plumber, just like everybody else spoke about, that required piping to accommodate the extra meter. And my secondary meter was activated on November 19, 2003. Almost 20 years. And it was my understanding that on my primary meter, I would not have to pay sewage costs, as you've heard before, on a secondary meter, thereby saving some money for watering the grass. And that was the whole idea, right? This agreement between the township and residents, like myself, now numbering 3,200 people, or 3,200 households, would be broken. I don't think you'd want to do that. In my case, just to be a little more specific, it would cost me $184 a year for infrastructure. I was told that the extra $184 a year was to cover the cost of replacing the meter. A new meter costs about $400 plus labor. My meter has been working for most of the 20 years without a problem. No one's come from the township to examine the meter, investigate if there are any issues, or tell me that they had to replace the meter.
Could you wrap it up, please?
If I had to pay the infrastructure fee for the last 20 years at $184, I would have paid $3,680 over that period. So I would have paid for seven such meters. Makes no sense. It's untenable. If the township is really desperate for additional costs or revenue. And by the way, Bloomfield Township residents have supported every increase the township has requested in the last 36 years I've been here. They should consider grandfathering those homes that already have secondary meters and changing a nominal fee, or charging a nominal fee of, let's say, $500 divided by 20 years, or $20 per year.
Mr. Greenbaum.
Which would make a lot more sense.
About to wrap it up.
And help people. So all the other infrastructure outlets that currently apply to the primary water meter, and I don't see any reason to apply a secondary meter fee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, I'm Doug Levine. I live at 7295 Sandy Creek Lane. I've lived there for 29 years. The meeting's getting kind of long, so I'm not going to go through my list, but basically, it's reiterating everything that everybody has said in this room. Thank you all for coming out here. I really thought I was going to be the only person in the room. But I'm glad that I'm not the only person that feels this way. I kind of feel like it's just so wrong. I'm so against what you're doing. It's, like everybody else, I did the same exact thing, and now I feel like, like you're changing the rules in the middle of the game. I'll wrap up, but I just want to, the one thing that I would like to know is, and I've spoken to a couple of you, I know you're the ones that are going to be making the decision. If you are going to be making this decision, I'd like to know how many of you have secondary meters in your house? I want to know what you're, if you're going to be accruing this cost. I am. Mine will be $186 a year because it's a one-inch meter. When things are, when I agree with something, or I feel like I'm getting rid of something, I'm not going to argue. I can't believe I'm actually here tonight. It's amazing that I'm actually standing up for myself, and other people are standing up for themselves also. This is just wrong. It's taxation without representation. If you aren't all paying this fee, it's taxation without representation. That's what happened with the Boston Tea Party.
Thanks for your comment. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment?
Can I talk again?
No.
No, but I think you've been heard, I promise.
Hello, my name's Kevin Robertelli. I've been a resident of Bloomfield for over 33 years. I moved like six years ago. I actually put in a secondary meter because we do have a pool. We use a lot of water. A lot of that evaporates. So I am against what they're doing here. I paid actually a lot more money than these people did, maybe a few thousand dollars to put it in. And then the other thing I want to say is, is like you said, when your water comes into the house, if you only have a one-inch line, I know when they put in my secondary meter, my plumber, he put a bigger meter size. And your water department came out, they inspected, they're like, why do you put a bigger meter? It's not going to make a difference. So you're not going to get any more water through that line. And on another note, our family owns lots of properties. I didn't know tonight you guys were actually replacing all the meters. What's the point of that? Why would you do that? And then I know my meter is actually wireless, so I don't know the technical about it, but why can't you just take a reading every month? So, and then the fee to send postage and everything else, it's just a waste of money. So I appreciate all your help. Thank you very much. So, I appreciate all your help, thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Does anyone?
Well, we never want to cut people off. And just to let you guys know, we sent, the board decided, and Noah, to send out every single secondary meter person, so it does hurt a little bit, because I think people forget, we're all residents too. I've been here 51 years, so this is somewhere we all grew up, we love. You have secondary meters up here, you have none, you have a gamut, because we're all residents. So that's why when all the voices coming at us through that one year of, hey, everybody get together and talk, remember, you're only 3,000 out of 15,000, so we didn't feel like we were getting your voice. So, to the last gentleman who said, I'm glad, that you were glad you weren't the only one, we're all glad you weren't the only one here too. Because this is exactly why we sent out postcards to every single secondary meter person to get you here to talk with us. So, I know it may not seem like we were happy, I'm happy, they're all happy, I promise you that's why we sent that out. Before Noah comes back up and answers a lot, again, since we represent everything, you have secondary meters here, you have some without, those that may not have been to all those, the monthly billing actually will help some of the people that are frustrated about the meter size, because there's two different ways of doing. Standard is meter size, your meter size, which we didn't feel was fair. So we agreed with the 12,000 or so others that had sent in, of the others that are affected too, where you have a senior. She lives alone, she uses very little water, she pays the same flat rate based on meter size. So if we can switch to volume and how much you use, which has to be a monthly rate, it also saves those, who we had a gentleman on this board, who had a huge, huge bill, because he had a water leak probably, what, two weeks after the bills went out, didn't know about it until three months later. You're talking, some people come to us with thousands of dollars extra, because they didn't know there was a water meter leak, or a water leak in their system, or a flushing toilet. So the meter, the people who came to us that year said, we want the smart meters, we want you to be able to tell us there's a leak right away. So when we talk about swapping out meters, these are called smart meters, where you actually have an app, and you know the second you have a leaky, flushy toilet, or something, so you can stop the water usage and reduce your bills. It also is where you won't care about the meter size, because it's how much water you're using. So it gets you, when we're talking about equity, we're talking about that final part of, you will have control of what you are paying based on your usage. It'll take away the meter size, it'll take away all that others, and we wish there was a contractor out there to do it quickly, they're just the quickest they can do. But again, we're trying to make you happy by grandfathering and doing options like that. We also have 12,000 other people that we have to think of too, so we're trying to make everyone happy. So just like someone might say, well, they don't have a secondary meter, they don't have the same here, but remember, there are seniors out there on fixed incomes. There are people with only one person, or you have a house like us where we have potential for eight people, but there's two of us in it. So again, it gets rid of all of that. That's what, when people keep saying, why monthly, why monthly, you're not hearing it here, because we already heard it from all the others through, I believe we had six meetings total over that year, and that was a constant thing of, I just want to pay for what I'm using. That has to be a smart meter, which also reduces the amount of people that we have to hire to go out and manually drive by. Right now, these old meters drive by. It will actually, like I said, send an app, it's an app that you would have, it's immediately sent to us, so it reduces a lot of overhead, but that's what that is. And I know a lot of, I know a lot of faces are my neighbors, and I just want to remind you guys that we all are in that same boat, that's why we wanted to keep peace on the land for everybody, which is why we sent out 3,200 postcards to make sure you all did come. And we appreciate all your comments. The other thing I want to talk about, and I wish that sometimes people come and drop a bomb and then they leave. So you might notice there's some people that aren't here. When it comes to lawsuits as a resident, I'm not talking to you as a supervisor right now, please stop suing over things that you know are wrong, in a sense of if you're, whether it's a campaign, or whatever you're doing, these, someone who tells you sue the township, we pay as residents, because we don't sell products, we take in tax revenue. We pay, when a township gets sued, when West Bloomfield gets sued, when we get sued, we as residents pay those costs. So when somebody sued the township, because they thought that there was some, they didn't like who was in charge, or whatever, we had to pay all the way up to the Supreme Court to prove that those were lies. And even after paying 1.2 million dollars in legal fees to prove they were lies, there's still people repeating those lies. So again, I'm just begging you, when somebody tells you sue the township, they drop a bomb and walk out, just think about that before you sue the township, because if you sue the water again, and we have to go again to prove that that same claim was false, who do you think pays? We all pay. Just please, don't always listen to the voice that says, sue the township, please. And that was as a resident that I'm begging you. So now I'm going to put back on my supervisor hat, because I'm sick of paying for frivolous lawsuits as a resident. Noah, we have a lot of questions that, I know you were feverishly writing, I was, I don't know if you want to, if you wrote some down, if you can go one at a time, or we can start knocking them up. You've got six pages, I've got four. So if you want to kind of go through, answer them?
Yep, so, on the kind of driver to change these meters, it's not to go to monthly billing, it's not really to, even the customer service side, what it is, is our meters, over 50% of them at this time are 15 years or older, and meters do nothing but slow down as they get older. So over years 15 to 20, I lose the revenue from the meters, because they're slowing down for the cost that that meter costs to replace. So, as I go beyond that, revenue is not collected for the water going through the meter, right? So the meters slow down, so industry practice is to chain the meters between 15 and 20 years. So, brand-new meters that are in homes, we're not going to be changing those. We're going to be adding the cellular signal, so we do not have to go around and do the drive-around for billing, and also that will result in the customer service benefits of allowing us to understand our usage in a way that allows us to set the tiered rates. It allows the customer to understand their usage, so they avoid the leak situation that we talked about, which I can vouch can add up to thousands of dollars for residents, and that's something we deal with on a weekly, daily basis, complaints about that, and issues caused by leaks, that type of thing. Because once the water goes through the meter, it's through the meter. We don't, you know, that's basically the responsibility of the property owner at that point, because we can't go into your house, and, you know, the toilets and fixtures and all that are the responsibility of the homeowner. So it allows that tool to go in there and see what's going on, maybe modify your usage based on that, but at least be aware of what you're using and that type of stuff. That's the secondary, tertiary benefits to running a business properly, which is properly metering the water that's going in.
Did you notice how nicely we all just, we want to all get along, we all sat very quietly, even when somebody said something like sue the township. Please respect that Noah's going to answer all the questions. Please, sir, please, please, sir. Thank you.
Nobody said sue the township.
And, and as, and thank you for admitting who started the lawsuit, but thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so that is the industry practice, that is what the data shows. Inside a meter, the way they work, it's a mutating disc that is a moving part within the meter that only slows down. The meter cannot get faster. And as you slow the meters down, you are losing revenue, and you are unfairly applying the costs across the system. So this is akin to replacing the brakes in a car, or general maintenance and industry practice within the system. The pedigree for Raftellus, I'm sure there was the board meeting when we, you know, awarded the contract. What I'll do, I'll wait till the end, so that Colin can kind of stand up for the company he represents, but they are a national entity based out of St. Louis, it was an open bid process. They actually beat out a local firm, based on the quality of service provided and the depth of skill.
Again, you guys were really, please, please.
Okay, so I'm going to.
Everybody's.
Secondary meters, all hear about the secondary meters.
You are, but there were other people that talked about meter size. Somebody did ask a question, it was one of the very first that Sharon asked, what is Raftellus pedigree? We are literally going question by question, and please, I'm asking you as a resident, not a supervisor, just because it wasn't your question doesn't mean it wasn't important. Please value everyone's questions just as much as your own. So thank you, Noah, I believe that was your question, and yes, we will make sure to answer it for you. Thank you.
Yep, and so, they are a nationally recognized entity, that is a leader in the field, they work with our suppliers to set their rates, whether we believe they're fair or not, what they set is debatable, again, but they do set their rates, and they work with multiple other local communities. You know, again, I'll have Colin answer even more in-depth, because I'm sure he's capable of doing so. So, post the presentation certainly. Other municipalities, so just at Saquon counterparts at Saquon, you know, Berkeley, Bigham Farms, Birmingham, Claussen, Latha Village, Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, Southfield, Detroit, all use an MEU structure, and all have, so they all use that as the basis of their structure, the meter equivalency unit structure, right? And additionally, basically, we were anomaly across the board in not charging that fee. So that brought up the question, and that's really why we're here today, to kind of flesh out the give and take of that fee, and, you know, this is, is getting that feedback and kind of driving that forward. So, other municipalities, I have studies on them, very, rates are very homegrown, they're very, I was in Fowlerville outside of Lansing, very small community, right, 3,000 customers. They don't even need a residential supplies. They charge a flat fee to every single resident, so that impacts things greatly. If you've got a leaky toilet, you don't care, because you're not paying anymore, right? And if you only have one person in the house, you're paying the exact same rate as everyone else, right? So, but, that's just indicative of how rates are homegrown. Somebody, other communities out there prop up or transfer general fund dollars to the water system, thereby artificially lowering the rate, right? That's a decision you can make as a municipality or as a board, but is that the right thing to do? Should the township at large, we don't, we have some people who aren't on either system, should they subsidize the water system, which is a separate entity? That's where you get into those type of questions with rates and that type of stuff. So, why do we pay more than maybe a local community near us? First of all, elevation and distance from Detroit drives, then it's your maximum usage. So all those things are very unique to our community versus anyone else around. We're 30 miles from Detroit, and we're over 300 feet higher than Detroit, so that, they have to pump the water up to us, and that costs more, right? So then, they charge us back for that. What's behind the assertions made in the presentation and that type of thing? 15 years in the water service and management of water services, Raftellus brings the industry guidance and the kind of worldly aspect to it, and then we rely on trade organizations, much like OSHA, and, that regulate certain things, but they tell us how water systems should operate. They create manuals, they guide us on the type of materials we should use in the water system. So we follow the guidance that's put out by, in this case, the American Water Works Association, who has over 4,000 different rules and regulations that they have in place as best management practices for water systems. So, we have a national organization that looks at how water systems are managed, and we use that guidance to come up with these, even like the goal amount for our reserves is based on a industry standard, which is 25% of O&amp;M, then your perceived exposure from an emergency in any given year. That comes from these standards and expertise of interior staff and exterior staff. So, what's a makeup of a fixed fee? So, inside that fixed fee, there is a component of our operations and maintenance, our O&amp;M, it's 21% of our O&amp;M, right? And what's important to understand about that is that there's some costs to our system that are fixed, no matter if we sell a gallon of water, or 255,000 gallons of water, right? There are costs in the system that are there, no matter if we sell a drop of water or not, right? And so, the theory is, we need to cover some of those expenses in order to make sure we got a solid, you know, source of income to provide O&amp;M and keep doing the capital improvement. And we got a 3% water loss, right? And that's indicative of how tight our system is, right? Some other communities have an over 30% water loss. That's money that, you know, is basically getting left on the ground, because we're not charging for it, but we're getting charged by Detroit for it, right? So, you know, that's part of the reasoning behind having a fixed fee, right? And then secondarily, the fixed fee combined our depreciation, our capital improvement portion of the rate, right, and just kind of brought those under that one fixed fee umbrella. So that's the kind of makeup and the thought behind the fixed fee. You mentioned stormwater. We don't own stormwater infrastructure, so we can't, so Birmingham's a city, they own stormwater infrastructure under the roads, and there's what they call a stormwater utility. And that's why they charge based on impervious surface, right? So, we don't have a stormwater system here, we don't own the roads, so we perceptively don't, can't charge a fee for management of impervious surface or elimination of that, because we don't have the system that takes on surface water.
We don't have storm drains?
They're not owned by Bloomfield Township, they're owned by the Road Commission for Oakland County. So we don't have stormwater infrastructure that we need the residents to pay for, because you're paying county taxes, and road commission's responsible for them. What we do is regulate development based on a stormwater standard to limit the impervious surface, and that's like a zoning and a building thing, not a water rate item.
We don't have a cost associated.
Correct. Because we don't bear that cost. Correct.
We have a cost, that's.
Right. And stormwater utilities are very new. The regulating mechanisms to allow for a stormwater utility to exist, they passed those laws less than five years ago. So like Ann Arbor, pretty progressive, I think we can all agree on that, for many different ways, right? They've had a storm, they were one of the first to have a stormwater utility. It's pretty complicated. It really gets into a private property rights question, because people are regulated on how much they develop the property, that type of stuff, but we don't deal with that here, so it's kind of like a.
Okay, wait, this one though is about water and sewer, but we can connect you with any county commissioner that can help about roads. I know we're all so frustrated, we have to pay for roads due. Anything county-related, I will absolutely connect you to the county, though. But let's focus on, we have a lot of questions to answer.
And feel free to reach out to me, certainly.
Yeah, Noah, yes.
I wonder how much part of that costs? From the rain right down to the.
Right, and.
Right.
Yeah.
And hopefully they know what that costs. I'm not sure they do, you know, because I don't know that they got that good of a handle on it, but that's the whole paradigm, and that's the difference between a township and a city, I mean, in the township range system that our entire country was split up in, when they did the first, you know, eight-mile road was the baseline, they split the entire state into townships by that standard, then cities came to be later, right? So that's why that, you know, and townships are traditionally small government, right? Now, we're an urban township with 50,000 people, so we don't, you know, where I'm from, up by Saginaw, some of the townships are, it's all farm fields, right, and there's only 5, 6,000 people there. Well, maybe the, maybe we're kind of a pseudo township, like, because we're urban, you know, we have different stressors involved. The township where I lived didn't even have a water system, right, so, but they had a sewer system. But that's kind of plays into that township versus other, so. I think it's important, the, so the changing of the meters, again, is due to, the main driver of that is, because this came up a few times, the main driver of that is the fact that the meters basically slow down and become non-functional between that 15-year to 25-year time period. And again, we're not replacing them if they don't have to be replaced. We're going to, you know, put them out into that program until it's farther. What we are going to do is put the cellular signal on it to start getting the data that we need to start setting the tiered rates, you know, and give the customer service benefits perceivably. So, take the meter back, that type of paradigm, you know, there's 85% of people, even with this, in the secondary meter program, 85% of the people based on usage still benefit from the program, right? So, but, there's some people, and we talked to people, that have benefited. So, but there's some people, and we talked to people, that have been in the program for 20 years and still haven't made back the price that they paid for the meter. You never should have been in the program, right? It was a bad move, it was a bad business decision then because you're not a high enough user to recoup that cost out of it, right? So, that cost benefit analysis is certainly germane to this and some of the people we talked to shouldn't have been in it in the first place, right? But others, if you're, like, let's say you bought a house and it had the meter, right? You're kind of pigeonholed there, right? But we, as we talk to people, we've offered, if it doesn't make sense for you, we can't pay the plumber, right? And we can't go and do the plumbing work because that's, we don't have insurance for that, we can't, we don't have plumbers and on staff, right? But we can waive the fee, we can, you know, well, the permit fee that would be required from the building department, the 70 bucks I heard, and I think it went up, but we can waive that fee, we can assist you, but a plumber has to do the work and you got to pay for that, right? But we'll facilitate you coming out of the program. If the meter has value, we'll buy that back, right? But, so, we're not, I mean...
But Noah, if we're going with the grandfathering though, that wouldn't be an issue.
No, but I'm saying...
But you, but what you're going to do for anyone new that would be coming, if the board goes that way, would be, they would get an idea of what they use and you would tell them based on, you need this many average units to make sense.
Right. And we can give you that line. It's a simple equation because you know the, you know the cost, we can walk you through that. Right now, the break even point is about 11 units. Actually, with the fee instated, 11 units on your secondary meter puts you at the balance point. Then anything more than that, you're benefiting by that no sewer fee, right? And...
What is a unit?
A unit is 1,000 gallons of water. That's what we bill you on. So, and other communities bill, even to point out a technicality, a community, community, some communities based on, bill based on cubic feet, right? So, if they're based on cubic feet and you're seeing a bill and we based on 1,000 gallons, that's two different, that's not apples to apples, right? So, that's why you got to kind of look deeper into the rates. We did research, just due diligence, all the documents and that. And what, we're not talking about adding the sewer fees back into the program. It's adding a fixed fee into the program, right? Which is still adding a fee, but it's, it's different, it's not adding that sewer fee back in, right? So, that's completely not what's going on here.
Well, it's still a fee.
It's certainly still a fee, but it's not the sewer fees, right? And a couple of people said that, so I want to make that distinction, just so everybody knows.
Nobody understands the basis of, or at least nobody I've talked to understands the basis for charging for the additional meter or the size of the pipe.
Yep. And that was asked a little bit farther, we'll get to that. I'll, I just want to get, make sure I cover them all so I keep going down in the, in the, you know, my presentation, I don't want to skip anybody. So, then we heard about, I want to touch on the burden of irrigation water on the system. And we have to understand, we're not only talking about secondary meter customers because there's a lot of other customers out there that irrigate that don't have the secondary meter, right? So, what we have to do, we can't just look at secondary meter users and take their usage and say, well, that's irrigation, all of our irrigation, right? So, what we have to do is look at winter versus summer. And we're lucky in Michigan, because not many, I hope nobody's watering their grass in the winter, right? So, we can, that sets a baseline for us, right? And what, in the summer months and in the other months of the year, we use 38% more water, right? And that comes important because the way we're charged from Detroit is based on the maximum amount we can take in a day and then also the max hour that we take the water. So, the entire water rate goes up if we irrigate more, okay? And that's as a whole, that's not just secondary meter customers, right? So, again, our rate is, and much like the meter equivalency unit charge, our rate is based on the maximum amount of water that we can possibly take. Because Detroit has to be ready to feed us that water regardless of when. So, that's what that, that's what the key, that's why irrigation is a key driver of the charges, secondary meter or not, irrigation drives the design of the system. Because we have to beef up everything to basically put the water on the ground, so...
But how does that...
So, do you want to explain, meaning size wise? So, you explained it to me and others because I didn't fully understand as well. This is a lot of us asking the same questions. So, you had explained that if we didn't have, some of the communities that they're not irrigating as much, or they have tiny areas, not one acre, five acres, they can get away with smaller, cheaper pipes, they can get away, and ours have to be much larger to take on more quantity at a faster rate.
Correct. And so, one thing, we're not talking about the size of the pipe coming into the house.
And this is the infrastructure that's getting old that we're constantly fixing because it's like 60 years old.
Right. So, one thing is, we're not talking about the size of the service coming into the house. We're talking about the ability of the meter to pass water through it, right? So, that's the basis for the charge. Secondarily, you kind of move to a point where, again, this represents a higher usage, just like we all have to pay more on the system to provide fire protection that we may never ever use, right? But we have to have the hydrants in place, there's state regulations that cause us to invest heavily in the ground to upsize the pipes for that. Same thing kind of with the irrigation. The system has to be sized for your perceived use on the system based on meter sizes, based on irrigation, based on all those factors, we have to make the system bigger to handle that flow. So, the meter equivalency unit charge seeks to proportionalize that amount that's charged. And again, it's an interim step here and it was a one step towards equity in it. And again, we used to charge everybody the flat fee regardless of any other factors. So, we heard it's a burden on the low users, right? We want the cost shifted out, because what we're really talking about is proportionalizing the cost. It's going to cost the same no matter what, it's who pays more and who pays less, right? And so, we heard loud and clear that very small users should not be paying the same as very large users, right? So, this was an interim step to that.
Why?
Because equity.
And if anybody wants to watch, a lot of this was discussed, all of those meetings where they explained all of this are available on demand. You can watch, there about 15 hours worth of discussions and the equity one was a big one that we had all had a lot of questions too. So, I know some are just joining the conversation, but we've had about a year and a half worth of, and we can go ahead and put...
The reason is flawed. The logic is flawed. It's not a matter of what the outcome is. The logic is flawed.
It's okay.
Equity is wrong.
It's okay. So, equality and equity are two different things and it's hard to, that is a discussion in itself to help explain it.
One leads to the other because...
So, Noah, do you want to go on to the next one so that we can, because we have a lot of questions, remember, you all had a lot and we're trying to get to all of them. If there's anything Sharon, please, 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 you have great questions and he's been answering yours, but he's got to get to everyone else's.
I can just sit here and absorb all of it.
That's why, that's why we're saying, it's a lot to take in in one day because you're all, some of you are just joining. There's hours and hours of information out there to catch up, but it isn't fair also to put Noah through 15 hours worth of stuff. There is, yeah.
Watch it and come back and ask.
You might want to listen to the other questions though. And a lot of this might not affect, because if a grandfathering is happening, a lot of this won't affect. I just want to make sure that a lot of people understand that that is kind of a focus. Okay.
Okay, so, then there was a question on kind of why rush to replace the meters? It's, that's not it, we're not replacing good material, you know, but again, you got to kind of come along for the industry ride with me that we're going to lose that revenue and my duty as a water operator is to make sure that system is solvent, industry standard is, you start losing functionality in the mutating disc, 15 to 20 years, I'm going to lose that revenue, we're going to lose that revenue, everybody else is going to pay more in the system. And all I want to do is accurately account for that water going in.
What's the revenue figure?
Okay, so, why not rehook the meter or your irrigation system back up to the main line? Because you're going to pay sewer fees, right? So, that's why you shouldn't do that. Unless, again, you're not using enough water to irrigate to make it work your while, right? So, if you don't use enough water right now to make the, make the program profitable, you should be out of it anyway.
The township tell us that before we start. Why don't you do an analysis that says, hey, let me see how much water you're using and I'll tell you whether you need to put a second meter in me.
I was not around, you know, we will help you through...
So, Noah, how about before we continue, I think a lot of this would end if we had a board discussion. Sorry, so the public comment, a lot of this might end if we can just have a quick board discussion, maybe to discuss, if there's consensus on grandfathering, because I don't, Noah has been very brave, this is a lot to take on and I think some of this stress that everyone's feeling, it might go away after you hear some of this board discussion. Thank you.
You may not want us to do the township, but we do vote.
Thank you. So, thank you, unless everybody wants to, unless anyone isn't interested in grandfathering, we can continue discussing, but it sounds like, personally, I can't vote for everybody, but it does sound like the group was interested in grandfathering. So, can you talk to us, based on what everyone out here is saying, if we were to grandfather them, can you talk more about how that could be done and how we can do that going forward?
Yep. And I did mention that I believe there is consensus towards that option in my presentation. Nuts and bolts of that, we can implement that fee on that basis, we're notified when a property changes hands, so we can apply that fee at that point. And we can certainly walk through that cost benefit analysis with the property owner. I would invite them to go through that cost benefit analysis on their own, based on their usage in the past and do that cost benefit, but we can walk you through that process. But again, if you know and understand how we kind of get there, then that helps us explain it when you call. But we can certainly walk you through that process and certainly that analysis should take place prior to entering the program, so...
Were there some questions that you had aside from, so, before we do go to, because we don't want to ignore any questions that weren't related to grandfathering, because a lot of what came to us was, please grandfather.
Yep.
Were there questions aside from grandfathering that aren't related to a secondary meter grandfathering that you wanted, that came through?
Sure.
Because we don't want to minimize those too.
Yeah, so, there's, there was a comment about, I don't need a one inch meter, I'll just downgrade it, right? Well, I would definitely talk to a plumber then. Most of the time, this wasn't an arbitrary decision, that it's based on the number of fixtures in a home, it's based on number of stories, how far you have to push the water, maybe the size of your irrigation system that you're installing, that's the size that the pipe was engineered when the home was built, coming into the home. Before you make a decision like that, you need to be aware of what that's going to do to your system. Maybe a home, I haven't seen it much, but maybe a builder said, hey, if one inch is better, let's put a two inch in, right? There's a lot of cost involved with that and there's a lot more water delivered, so a lot of times that wouldn't make sense. And a lot of times, the way engineering is now, it's more value added engineering where they're not trying to overbuild things like they were maybe back in the 30s or 40s or things like that. So, before you make a change like that, I would definitely consult a plumber and make sure you, you're not going to be a detriment to your own system. There was a question on why are sewer rates higher? For one thing, because we have a secondary meter program. That, if you don't pay into the sewer free fee, the denominator for number of people paying into the sewer fee is lower, so you're splitting that cost by less and so costs go up, right? Plus sewage costs a lot more to treat.
We do pay the sewer, we don't really pay, we don't pay for anything we don't pay. It's ridiculous what you just said.
Do you want to try and explain it?
I'm answering why sewer rates are higher, right? And it...
It makes no sense.
Well, if you don't have a class of people that are paying into sewer fees on the secondary meters, then there's less people in the denominator.
You're not using any sewer.
I get it, I get it.
So, Noah, do you want to explain what you mean is that there's a fixed cost to the sewer by allowing people, and it's usually water in, water out? So, for those people like, that irrigate and don't have a secondary meter, they still pay the amount of water going into the sewer system even though it doesn't. What you mean is, they're paying less into the sewer because we know how much not to charge them.
Right. And I'm not debating whether that's right or wrong, that's just a fact of what is going on, right? And I don't have a preference either way, that's really a policy decision. And additionally, why sewer fees are higher? We have very good source water in Michigan, so it costs less to treat it, whereas our sewage, it's very concentrated effluent, plus regardless of what we do and where we put the water, sewers leak, right? And they draw water in and we pay to treat that water. So, it's even debatable, which I, secondary meters, I agree, it doesn't go into the sewer, but it's debatable whether that causes INI infiltration into the sewer system. Additionally, we have some areas of the township that are combined, so stormwater does go into the sewer and any overshooting, but that's really getting into the details, right? But that's why the charges end up the way they are, okay?
Do you guys want to just talk about, so, does anybody have questions? Because this is the first time we've been able to talk together. I know Noah put together a great option of, which is very similar to a tax process, where we buy the house, been here 51 years, that tax rate is based off that, but the new person had on caps. So, being that, I feel that knowing this board and knowing that we do care about the neighbors, that bond is important. Is there some discussion that would question that? Do you have, do you need more answers to that or is that something that Noah can go with? Because when he asks for guidance, just so people know, we can't talk together as a group unless we're in public. And when you only have a quick time, you want to make sure that you're putting together what the people in the board want, that's why we do this. Is there anything up here question wise that would make somebody concerned for doing that, that wants to ask some questions? Or are we all kind of in that consensus that we can aim him that way? Would anybody on the board like to talk about that? I'll put it out there, I'm for it.
No, I was...
I'll put it right out there that, I personally think that it's fair to all, it's fair to the people that did make the bond with the township. I think it's fair to the other 12,000 that they know that we're not going to keep adding people into it without them knowing going forward that it would be different. As somebody who, if people irrigate and they think, wow, this still is beneficial, it's fair to them, I personally think it's fair to grandfather the, or sorry, to not charge the current users that are on the secondary meter program. If anyone feels differently, feel free to come.
I don't feel differently, but I felt that way right from the beginning, that we should not be charging a rate on the secondary meters. So, with that said, certainly, I am in favor of grandfathering in, we should not be charging secondary meters, certainly for people who came into the program with the understanding that there would be no charge on it. It's been in effect for about 25 years and that entire time, it was sold on the, well, it was sold on to save on sewer costs, it really was. And for that, and also people who have pools and irrigate a lot. So, with that said, I mean, that's why people invested in their meters and certainly 100% in favor of grandfathering people who have a secondary meter, we should not be charging them.
And we don't get to vote, I wish we could vote at study sessions, but this is basically putting everything into the water rates that we will be voting on. And if he hears a consensus, that's what you will see in the water rates that are suggested to us. I wish we could vote tonight, I promise you. There you go.
So, we had this discussion last year and last year, the discussion was that there would be meter charges. I'm sorry. Is that on? So, we had this discussion last year and we, and the discussion was to defer the decision to this year. I think what we're talking about really this year is now, or what's being discussed is the concept of just grandfathering those in and then charging new people, users, the fee. Quite frankly, it's a compromise because initially, the thought was everyone should pay. Now, the thought is, or the discussion is, only the new people should pay. I guess I, I'm still consistent with my thought that no one should pay, but I can accept the compromise, but I can accept the compromise that those that understood it, that they shouldn't pay, shouldn't pay. So, I accept this, but I do really think it is a compromise because I would, I guess, agree with most of the comments that were made that, especially the gentleman who talked about, you know, having this for 20 years and if the meter's coming in, if we're just replacing the meter and the meter is X amount of dollars, you're not taxing the system more, you're just really replacing that one meter and maybe we can look at something like that for new people, new charges. But it... But in a minimum, I would clearly agree with not charging secondary meters for people that are in use of it.
This is for not voting, we're just polling.
Exactly.
To make sure we're not behind any rules, we're just polling.
I want to echo the treasurer's sentiments because last year, it seemed like this board was moving in the direction of charging the secondary meters immediately with no notice. And I'm glad that my colleagues here were able to agree with me that we should put it off by a year and seek some additional feedback, which I'm glad to say we got tonight. I do also agree with treasurer keeps that, and have been against it from the beginning. I was pretty intimately involved in the rate study discussion, working with Raff tell us the consultants and our DPW people. And I have never been in favor of the secondary meter charge. But would reluctantly agree with the grandfathering or to provide consensus for the staff. But I want to add that when we did the study last year, a year and a half ago at this point, we held a community values workshop where we talked about what are the things we're looking for as we set rates? And I pulled it up here and the things that we discussed were essential affordability, overall cost of the service, rate stability, revenue stability, and usage-based billing. And we asked for feedback from the community, we held two or three town hall meetings where we got the feedback. And I think what was agreed to consensus-wise on this board was, usage-based billing is very important, that if you use more, you should pay more. If you use less, you should pay less. The difficulty that we have as a system is that we get charged fixed costs. So 80% of our water and sewer budget is a fixed cost. We have no control, I mean, year over year, we can control it a little bit, especially on the O and M, the operations and maintenance. But overall, whether we sell one gallon or a million gallons, or, how much do we sell a year? Five million gallons?
255,000.
255,000 gallons.
Units.
Units. So that's 255 million gallons.
Correct.
Okay, so I was in the ballpark. That what would be great is if we could say, okay, we get charged 20 cents a gallon and we're going to tack on 5 cents to cover our internal operations and maintenance and we're going to charge 25 cents a gallon. We can't do that because we get charged fixed. And so what we have to do with the support of our staff is figure out a rate that provides affordability to the customer, a variable component, as well as stability to the system so that in an extremely wet year, when we sell a lot less and we don't get the revenue that we were expecting, we're not left all of a sudden not able to pay our bills. But I think one of the goals, and one of the goals of the smart meter program, is to be able to move us to more of a tiered billing system, monthly billing, which will allow us to manage cash flow better, and reduce the need to have more fixed costs. So I'm agreeing with this, with the grandfathering, so that there's no impact to people who are given a promise for a system over the last 25 years. But I'm doing so with the knowledge that over the next few years, we're going to be working to phase out or minimize the fixed cost component of the bill. And the goal will be to move to more of a variable cost component, and therefore, the more you use, the more you'll pay, the less you use, the less you'll pay. And that was the feedback that we got a year ago when we did this study. That was the goal of the study, to be able to design rates that would allow us to do that. And so that is ultimately, I think, where we're going. And that is the vision that we have as a board in leading this water system, that we want to make it as fair, and the word equity has been tossed around a lot, sometimes I think, maybe that's a politically charged word these days. But let's use the word fairness. And the fairness is that the more you use, the more you'll pay, the less you use, the less you'll pay. So that's my feeling on that.
I'd be happy to go next and talk a little bit about it. First, I wanted to thank everybody who came here tonight. I also want to thank the folks who called and emailed. We did hear a lot of opinions that came into pretty much all of us. So speaking for myself, and I think probably everybody here, we really do like to hear the comments and that's why cards are mailed out and people are asked to participate. I must say, last year, the suggestion Michael that you made to delay was brilliant. And I appreciate that.
Say that again?
Brilliant.
It's on recording if you need it.
It's been recorded.
I appreciate.
Save it for the record.
I appreciate that. And I think you've summed it up fairly well, too. You know, from the Raff tell us study and the work, what I thought we were trying to do is move to a, away from a fixed fee type of system to a system that was based on usage. You know, my opinion was it should be 100%, you know? We moved from some portion of fixed fee to a smaller portion of fixed fee and would push that down even farther so that we have even less fixed fees into the system. Why is that fair or equitable? You know, when we had a ready-to-serve charge and everybody got, you know, a flat amount each billing, it was unfair to those low users. So if you used one unit but had a huge fixed fee, they paid a lot of money for that one unit. And that seemed unfair, and I think we all kind of thought that was unfair. What I've never really been comfortable with is the idea of the pipe size and the meter size as being a good proxy for usage, though. We've talked a lot about this and I remain unconvinced that that's really a good proxy. I mean, it's a, you know, capacity does not equal use. And I'd like to go to a system that measures use and still not exactly sure why we can't do that with the meters we have. With, to me, a little math, adding up how much water we sent out, how much water everybody used, what's the average amount, and come up with a number, seems like we could do that without replacing meters or adding, you know, better cellular service. But, so yeah, I wouldn't even grandfather, I would just completely drop the idea of a fee associated with the meters. It is. And similar to what we discussed two weeks ago. And, you know, I'm sort of wavering or unconvinced that the size of the pipe should matter, too. I mean, we want to get to usage-based, not capacity-based. They do seem to be completely unrelated. Even though Raff tell us, as smart as they are, has advised us that that's a consistent thing to charge on and it makes sense for the system, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me, the average kind of person, I'm just a lawyer, I'm not a professional engineer, so.
Neither am I.
You are a professional engineer, though.
No.
No. Corey in the back is.
No, I'm not an engineer, no.
That's why Olivia...
I have a bachelor's of science.
But you're a certified?
I'm an operator, a water system operator certified, yeah, but that's, I will never claim that, so.
Corey is the engineer, that's why engineering and water work together.
Yeah, and that's why they tell us what we need to do to keep the system up, right? So yeah, that's their role.
And this part, too, is we're talking about how to break up the pie. Earlier, other conversations are about how large it should be, how much we should invest in our system, how good the system should be. And the fact that, for instance, we have 3% water loss is a great indicator of how well our system's maintained, how well it's operated, and I would encourage us to continue to invest in it and have it operating really, really well. You know, when you have 30% water loss, that just means people are putting their head in the sand and ignoring their system and ultimately kicking that can down the road. So I'm not for doing anything like that. We should continue to spend on capital, our capital, and invest in our system to stay ahead of it and pass down to future residents a stellar water and sewer system that's very reliable. But when it comes to, you know, splitting up the pie, I think that we should have a graduated tiered rate that reflects usage and less than fixed fees. And the pipe size and the meter don't really, I think, they talk about capacity and not usage, it just doesn't really, it just never really made that much sense to me. But Raff tell us, as smart as they are with regard to that analysis, you know, I'm still unconvinced, maybe we'll hear from them tonight and they can better explain that. So that's where I'm at right now.
So I guess to backpedal a little bit, when we started in this and we hired Raff tell us, what we were hearing from the open houses or the public events that we had, we had some at the library, was we were hearing more that people were upset that there was the RTS, the...
Ready to Serve.
Ready to Serve. I know what it means, but I couldn't come up with it. The Ready to Serve. So what we were hearing, we weren't hearing from secondary meter people, that was something that Raff tell us told us, that they have never seen a community system that did not charge something for a secondary meter, even if it was something small, you know, I mean, there is the replacement or whatever. But, and that was something that was new knowledge to us. But what we were hearing was the people that were saying, why do I spend this Ready to Serve? I go to Florida for a month or three months in the winter. I don't even turn my water on. And so there was this fairness, you know, equality thing that said, you know, lower users, for whatever reason, you're lower users, maybe you're a single person in your home, you know? Lower users were paying the same amount as a high user. You know, somebody that was here with five kids 12 months of the year. So we were looking at that perspective. On the other side of it, like Martin said, we have to split up the pot, we have to maintain the water system, the 3% is incredible. And I can tell you from personal experience that we were out of town and had a water main break. We've actually had two at our house, because we have a pond nearby, maybe that's partly causing some of it, I don't know. But one of the times, we were out of the country and the water pipe burst across the street, there isn't a house there. And we came home and like all the trees were ice, the road was covered in ice, and we had to say, you know, what happened? We weren't home, but when it broke, somebody came out right away. The second time it broke, it was on a summer night, and we heard this minor explosion and there was this huge gurgle of water coming up out of the ground. It blew out a piece of the road. I called and somebody came out from the water department at midnight and turned the pressure down. They didn't turn it off so that we didn't all lose our water suddenly and people would start, you know, no water and it's going to upset the whole neighborhood. They reduced the flow and first thing in the morning, they had an emergency crew there and they fixed it again. So the part that says we have to have this great infrastructure and the fact that we only lose 3%, you know, I'm sure we've all seen on the news that water mains break and fire hydrants break in the city of Detroit and it floods the street for days. And you're going to pay for that if we don't come out and fix it. So there's this disparity between, you know, the low user and the high user, but we all have to pay the fixed cost. So, you know, we've gone round and round and that's why we really do appreciate you coming. We did do a survey at one of the meetings at the library last year. You know, we want to hear, because we want it to be as appropriate, fair, reasonable for everybody, whether you have a secondary meter or not. Because there's people say, I don't have a secondary meter, you know, I don't use that much water, why should I pay the same infrastructure cost, that same Ready to Serve, as somebody that has all these things and a big house and a big family and a pool? So really, you know, your input helps us to try and direct to really make it the most reasonable policy we can. But, you know, on the downside is we are not in a contract like some other communities. West Bloomfield subsidizes their rates. We don't do that because that's a slippery slope. They're not putting into their infrastructure and that's going to cause problems. Other communities are in a better contract that we did not get into at the right time. And when a contract opens up with more communities, we would like to try and get into that, which would be another way, the more you buy in a bigger lump is an efficiency. So we, you know, we want to look at every way we can. Unfortunately, water and sewer rates just go up because that's pass-through cost to us. So we can, you know, we can do what we can do, look at every avenue and just try and not be abusive and not be negligent on either side of low users, high users, irrigators. And we are a bedroom community, so we have over 90% residents. So to say, well, let businesses pay it, well, the businesses pay and if they have a bigger pipe, they pay. But we are not, we don't have a big downtown area and big business use that would help offset. So it does, you know, unfortunately, you know, we're more residential, I like that about Bloomfield Township. I don't want a bunch of corporate offices, but that affects our rates, too.
Are you for or against the speed on the secondary meter?
I...
What was that?
I found that it was a lot larger than I anticipated when we first talked about it. And I would like to find a more equitable way than just secondary meters get hit with the full charge. I don't think that that's appropriate.
I'd like to replace it with a graduate. Because it's eventually funny for this. So I guess now it's my turn. I don't know where to begin, I have so much, I have so much to say. So I have a secondary meter. I know somebody, you know, said taxation without representation, but I am here, it's part of your representation, as a secondary water meter user. And I do use mine quite a bit because I'm very into gardening, so my water bill is astronomical. With that said, as a steward of the township and as a, you know, trustee, I take that responsibility greatly. And part of that responsibility is to make sure that when you turn on your water faucet, water is going to come out. When we have emergency repairs in the township totaling $4 million, we don't have to loan that money with interest, we don't have to come to the users and say, oh, now we have $4 million that we need to make up. So there does have to be a balance in the sense of, historically, when the township was sued, we were charging, it was, I think, a 77% fixed rate. So whether you were Lifetime, Equinox, Jim, or the senior in your small home, you were paying, 77% of your bill was the same because of that fixed fee. I believe it's somewhere around there. So when I learned that, I said, well, okay, yes, that does not seem fair, because there needs to be more of a variable rate in there to offset that fixed cost so that if you are the single person, you are leaving six months out of the year and you're not even turning on your faucet, of course, you're still going to have to pay to help maintain the system, but not that high fixed cost that was historically happening. So the lawsuit happened, the township was successful, and you know, there was a comment about, oh, well, the township wins. The way that I look at it, we're all township residents, when the township wins, we all win. When the township is, you know, if the water system is profitable, that's a benefit to us all. Because again, when you have $4 million in unexpected emergency repairs, well, now we've saved up, we've been good stewards of our, of our resources, and we have the money to pay our bills and keep the system running as we all expect it to be running. I'm so glad that we had such a large turnout today because for the last year and a half, you know, I'm relatively new to this board, I'm a criminal defense attorney, so I had no experience in this, setting water rates or any of that. But in the last year and a half, I've certainly learned a lot, but it helps to get the feedback from the residents. So as it's been mentioned before, we have 15,000 users and us secondary meter users, we are a smaller fraction of that larger population. So when we hear from Raff tell us, our consultants, who are experts in this, they say to us, this is uncommon to not charge this secondary fee. Not saying that we're going to charge sewer or sewage on your secondary meter, because again, it's not going to the sewer, it's going to your lawn. But then I wonder, okay, do we, you know, are we doing the right thing in not charging that? So then that became a question for the board. And we hear you loud and clear and, you know, obviously, it's going to benefit me as well as it would benefit all of you if we did grandfather it. And I am in favor of doing that because if people were entering it with the understanding that there would be no fee going forward, then probably the township needs to honor that. But as far as new users to the system, again, keeping in mind that we want to be good stewards of our water system, make sure that the township's always going to be able to pay their bills, and when our residents turn on their faucet, water, clean water is going to come out of that, we need to make sure that we're properly funding that system. So certainly, I'm in favor of grandfathering, but I do think that, and maybe, you know, it's going to be more board discussion as far as how do we set that rate? As far as getting more towards that variable usage base so that when you're using less, you're paying less, but still keeping enough money in the system to make sure, you know, Bloomfield Township is a very, it's an older community and so our infrastructure is aging. With aging infrastructure are increased costs. So we need to make sure that we're saving enough money so that when we have these, and someone said, oh, it's $4 million this year, probably that's not going to be next year. That's actually, is, might not be the case, because now we're inspecting all of our sewer pipes and our water system to find these issues. And as we find them, we have to fix them. So when we're looking for something, likely we're going to find it and that's going to have a price tag. So loud and clear, we heard you. And I just really, I know, I got the sense that some people feel like, you know, the board is against them and it's the township versus the residents. Personally, I ran to be trustee because I felt that residents needed a... Personally, I ran to be trustee because I felt that residents needed a stronger voice and needed representation on the board, and I'm one of you. So again, to me, when the township wins, we all win, and I'll leave it at that.
Noah, so it seems like there's a consensus around not charging it to existing meter holders. So that means that when you do the rates, you're just going to assume zero MEUs for all the secondary meters and calculate the rates?
Correct.
Okay. If we were to decide, let's say, in two weeks or four weeks, to say, we're not going to charge any secondary meters in the future, that wouldn't change how you calculate the rates?
The projection would not change. What it might change is our future forecasting, but we, you know, that's.
Right, because it sounds like, it sounds like there needs to be some more conversation, because I've heard a couple of colleagues here say that we should just not charge it at all.
Right.
And some people say, well, we should charge it, but grandfathering existing meter holders. Either way, it doesn't change what you need.
Correct.
Okay? But it's something that we can further discuss at a setting where we can vote.
Yes.
Right, where we can't do that right now, but at a different setting.
But knowing that he could bring something, so there are some voices that originally wanted fee for all, and now they're not, and saying, like, some of us are saying, let's get away with it. Knowing that fees might be going away anyway when we get to that, to the tiered rates, do we want to discuss that maybe instead of grandfathering, Noah gets the charge of just no fees for anybody?
Let me, I guess.
Because I'm now not hearing anybody that's really strong for, that was that compromise?
Yeah.
But I'm not hearing a voice right now at this board that is like, but we still got to really charge the future users. Do we want to just talk to Noah about?
I thought I heard that from three. I thought I heard that from three.
Well, because that was, we were the compromise of someone right now that aren't saying.
We can, we can discuss that if we want.
I'm thinking we might be there.
My point was just, we can have that conversation, whether we have that conversation tonight or another night, doesn't change what Noah needs to get out of this meeting.
So you would come to us on April 10th, whether we say for future or just no fees going forward, it doesn't change what you.
Correct, because in this year's revenue structure, nobody would be paying the fee anyway.
So we don't need to decide that tonight. We can, I'm certainly willing to have that conversation, keeping in mind it's already 9:30, and.
So if you have what you have, I mean, it sounds like there's some pretty strong consensus.
Yeah.
Do you feel like you have what you need from the people and from us?
Do we need to discuss the second topic that you need?
Yes.
The reserves?
Whether or not to take the money out of reserves.
Yeah. Sir, so I'll go first since I'm talking. I would be in favor of using the reserves and not putting it into the rates. I would like to get more educated on the bonding and how much it costs and the timeframe and things like that for the future. But we do have that surplus of $7 million right now. I think we should be using that rather than bonding.
Yeah. I'm in agreement with Michael and what's been discussed. I think it's very important that we use that money in the reserves, and it's essential that we have the money and we use it for any kind of major repairs that have been presented and whatever else may be coming out upon the inspections, because as has been stated, we are inspecting more. And as we discover any kind of cracks in the pipes or any kind of damage that has to be repaired, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that the repairs are taken care of. Otherwise, we would be in the position of having some potential liability. So with all that said, I think it's very important that we use the reserves.
I also want to give some ideas.
I would concur with using the reserves, and I think it's pretty basic. We have the money. We also are, in many different capacities, as residents, paying for a lot of obligations. So in terms of bonding at this point, I'd rather not if we don't have to. We have enough debt that we're paying down over the next 10 years. So as much as we don't have to bond, I'd rather not if we can afford not to.
I echo similar, that I think we should use the reserves. I think one of the things that came out of the study last year compared to our previous advice was it was to have a bigger reserve. And last year, one of the things we learned, and what we also learned from our unexpected long lake, kind of worst-case, you know, problem, emergency expense, was that maybe we were in fact having too much reserve, so, which further makes me comfortable that we can use the reserve for this. And in addition, in a year from now, depending on how water goes, the weather goes, whatever, we may, we may have to bond some of it, and we may be in a position where maybe 50% of it, we have reserves. That would be really nice thing. But for this year, definitely, reserves.
Yes, I would agree with that, absolutely.
Personally, for me, once we're over that cap of 13 that we're looking for, to me, you always put the money back in the system, so 100% for using the reserves.
Same thing with reservation with regard to the meter replacement idea, but for infrastructure, yes.
Right, okay. All right, so, you know, we talked about fairness, equity. Another kind of way to say that is proportionality, right? Proportion of costs or perceived benefit, you know. I'll also say, our actual, I think our water loss is actually 2.86%. So I overshot that.
Keep going, lower, lower.
In our favor, so.
You know, and then again, the, it's a misnomer to say, kind of, we're moving to smart meters. We already got the smart meters there and the radio reads. What we're going for here is to give us that ability to read them on this continual basis so we have the data flowing in. And there's two ways to do that. It's building towers to transmit those radio frequencies, right? Or it's going to a cellular signal and basically paying a Verizon or someone who it's their business to build and maintain towers, pay them to do it, right?
Isn't there a third way?
Uniquely, what's that?
The guy drives around more often.
Well, yeah, but then you're manpowering, right? And you don't gain the efficiency.
Nine million dollars.
You don't gain the efficiency of the customer service benefits.
But Noah, you and I did look into that. We couldn't get one single person to apply for that job.
Correct.
We had it up there for a really long time.
So in order to get the data faster.
We needed, how many? How many did we actually need?
Three or four.
To do it on a monthly basis.
Three or four.
Yeah, we needed at least three or four and not one person.
And so we budgeted last year to hire these people to try to accelerate this and get the data faster, right? And we put it out, and nobody applied, so. And I can't do it with the manpower that I have now. And we were going for part-timer, you know, based on our part-time pay structure, part-time meter readers, right? So we could not achieve that based on the market or the, you know, the employment market or the push and pull, so.
Well, the labor, the labor savings, you know, over the years, that we don't have multiple people driving around reading our meters.
There's a liability issue. Anybody driving around in that car for the township that might get in an accident, there's a huge liability issue.
I mean, these are all good reasons. I'm just saying, there is a third option. There's three.
Just a little more expensive option. So we, do you have what you need from us about whether or not to take out that concept of a secondary meter fee, and whether or not to use reserves or other options?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody have anything else?
No. So our next meeting right now, it's April 10th, where we'll look at, it's a regular meeting, where we'll look at the preliminary rate recommendations.
One, I, Raff tell us is still there. Do you want me to have them?
Right now?
Talk about their, well, they're an hour earlier than us in St. Louis.
No, because the people who left, who were, I think they were, they thought we weren't going to go to this grandfather thing.
Right, I got you.
So I think they were more concerned about that, but.
Well, there's three key tenants. The pedigree question.
They're not hearing the people who.
There's the more data question that Martin has brought up, that maybe they want to, and then there's the why MEU. So I don't know if we want him to address those items. Those were kind of the ones that I carved out for.
Do you guys want to hear that now, or do you want to hear the, are you good? Let's ask the board. What do you want to hear? Do you feel that you would want information from Colin right now? Are you good?
I'm good.
Doesn't seem necessary right now.
I think we're good.
We have.
All right, good deal. I just, you know, he's here for a reason, to support me in that data, right? And I know we were going to have a call with him, Martin, about these topics, so we'll certainly do that, you know. I think that's.
Maybe better to have that one-on-one instead of.
Agreed, agreed. I just want to make sure while we had them, we made sure we, you know, gave them their opportunity. So thank you, Colin.
Thank you, Colin.
But Noah, you have everything that you need for us to get to the next step.
Yes, I will be able to bring you rates on April 10th.
We had one very patient person wanting one last question. Can we allow that?
Just a reminder, we already had public comment. We've had the board discussion. I think everybody is getting what they were hoping to get when they came here of not putting the cost into the rates and not, and not charging secondary meter fees. So we will be available to talk after for anyone that wants one-on-one.